So, good evening. We're going to bring this school board meeting to order. And it is March 18th. Sorry, we're a little late, a little longer in our executive session. But we are starting at 7:15. All board members are present except for Elise Smelling and Alicia Hildy, and they are on the phone with us. They are both excused. And Mark Foster is also not with us, and he is excused. So at this time, Mr. Donnelly, would you lead us in the flag salute, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of the public where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. And if I could have our student representative read the opening statement, please?
Hi, my name is Emily Hickox, and I am the student representative to this board. We would like to welcome you to our board meeting and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars. If you are unable to be physically present for the entire meeting, you may choose to tune into the municipality of Anchorage's Channel 9 or YouTube to watch the live stream. Recordings of meetings are also available through the agenda in Board Docs.
Thank you. At this time, the approval of the agenda, and there has been made a recommendation to move memo number 137 as the first action item in front of 133. Is there any dissension on that proposal? Right, it's the, sorry, it's the resolution in support of Chugak Eagle River Ad Hoc Committee? Okay, thank you. And is there any other changes to the agenda? No changes to the agenda other than the one proposed. Is there any dissension? No dissension, the agenda is approved. And we will start with our reports. And student representative?
We haven't met since the last school board meeting. Our next meeting is on March 26th in the afternoon, and then on April 3rd, we're having our joint meeting with the school board.
Okay, and we have a MECAK report tonight.
Madam President, I believe that Matt Tiefert as the facilitator and Doreen Brown as our district rep on that will come forward and present the MECAK update.
Thank you.
And if you guys could give us your title and your names for the record before you start, that'd be great. Thanks.
Doreen Brown, Senior Director for Title VI Indian Education.
And I'm Matt Tiefert, Senior Director of Labor Relations and Benefits.
Thank you. And when you're ready, you can begin with your report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. The MECAK has met so far three, excuse me, twice this year, and we have two more meetings. And the focus, we've had three focus, three areas of focus so far this year. The first has been family engagement, and that's particularly in the area of academic English learners and that program. We've had presentations from Phil Farsen from that department. The members of the MECAK have seemed quite engaged in first, one of their first exercises was to help that department define family engagement, what they believe it should mean for the school district, the sorts of efforts the district might take to increase family engagement opportunities throughout the various constituencies. We had a follow-up meeting, and I misspoke earlier. We've had three meetings. So that was the August meeting, October, a follow-up exercise around family engagement, coming back together and working from the definition that Phil's department had put together and expanding on that. And Phil took back to his department ideas from the committee about, again, how better to increase family engagement opportunities throughout the community. And then I'm going to let Doreen speak to, at our second meeting, we convened in October, end of October, at the facility that she can describe, and she presented about the Title VI Indian Education Program.
Thank you. So just to expand a little bit on the family engagement, that's actually a PMO, a project management office that has been really helping with us so we can have a family engagement initiative for the whole district. So that work has been very important with that perspective from the MECAK and other community members, and certainly within the Anchorage School District. So we look forward to having more information about family engagement and how critical it is that we have that. So our second meeting was at the, let's see, Cookinlet Native Head Start. And I don't know if you've been over there, but they have a brand-new playground that is culturally responsive. In fact, I think there was just an article in the Daily News about their particular playground and how it's culturally responsive. So we got to see a whole tour just about their facility and looking at that playground. It was pretty amazing. But like Matt said, that we talked about Title VI Indian Education and the services that we provide. It's pretty robust. We're going right now heading into our summer. We're planning, and we've actually had about 200 students sign up just for our summer activities. So we talked about summer and then the engagement that we have with families and also with our students throughout the school year, whether it be during the day with direct services, professional development, and outreach to students at the secondary level and also elementary and middle school. So program overview was there, and it took up quite a bit of time, but we had a lot of great feedback. One of the things that we talked about at that particular meeting and then also into the third meeting for MECAK was actually about graduation regalia. One of the things the native advisory has put forth and members of our community and also around the state is really talking and having discussions about graduation regalia and having objects of cultural significance for our students to wear. It is really important, obviously, what we are in the business of is graduating our kids, right, getting them across that particular finish line. And how do we, how do our students represent themselves? So they've been working on that. So we gave them an overview and also asking them for their input and their feedback on what would those graduation objects of cultural significance be. And so we continued that conversation also at the third session.
The final area of focus so far this year has been in the area of recruitment and retention, and specifically building off of our workforce demographics and identified areas where committee members have expressed interest in trying to narrow the gap in terms of our current workforce as compared to our current student population. So we had a presentation actually last year from our Chief Human Resources Officer Todd Hess and our Recruitment Coordinator Amanda Graham about efforts at that time around recruitment. We still have, or since then I should say, we have a change in staff within Human Resources and have a new Senior Director of Staffing and Operations, Megan Schmidt, who has considerable experience in recruitment and retention, talent acquisition efforts, and a lengthy career in Human Resources. And so she has brought a new area of expertise and focus as to what we can do as an organization to sort of enhance our recruitment efforts, particularly in areas of identified interest, whether it be through a board directive or initiative or from administration interest, community interest. And that's where we really listen to the folks on the MECAK committee as to what their various constituent interests might be in filling positions within the school district. So we'll have a follow-up presentation. Of course, all of you are welcome to attend at our next meeting, and that will be a presentation by Megan Schmidt about what she's done to develop recruitment initiatives within her department in just the few months that she's been here and what we can expect going forward.
I'd like to add, so Kids' Day is coming up, and I know that we collectively are going to be having a table at Kids' Day. There's 20,000 people that come through that door. So Anchorage School District will be there, providing great activities for our youth to be engaged in. But we also want to showcase the great things that we do here in Anchorage School District and to join our team. So there will be lots of table tent things that parents can engage with and certainly engaging with our students, along with lottery, but really letting them know that we're a great employer as well. One of the things that I took back and we're doing for Title VI Indian Education, there's actually two things, is we'll be hiring our, we're going to go back to hiring our own student interns for this particular summer. We'll have eight high school students. And I tease and tell everyone, make sure you're smiling and showing what a great time and how wonderful and what an impact you are doing, teachers, to empower and encourage our youth, our high school students to go into education. That's our goal. Hopefully, they'll be working towards getting
In fact, I think there was just an article in the Daily News about their particular playground and how it's culturally responsive, so we got to see a whole tour just about their facility and looking at that playground, it was pretty amazing. But like Matt said, that we talked about Title VI Indian Education and the services that we provide, it's pretty robust. We're going right now, heading into our summer, we're planning, and we've actually had about 200 students sign up just for our summer activities. So we talked about summer and then the engagement that we have with families and also with our students throughout the school year, whether it be during the day with direct services, professional development, and outreach to students at the secondary level and also elementary and middle school. So program overview was there, and it took up quite a bit of time, but we had a lot of great feedback. One of the things that it, we talked about at that particular meeting and then also into the third meeting for MECAAC was actually about graduation regalia. One of the things the native advisory has put forth and members of our community and also around the state is really talking and having discussions about graduation regalia and having objects of cultural significance for our students to wear. It is really important, obviously, what we are in the business of is graduating our kids, right, getting them across that particular finish line, and how do we, how do our students represent themselves? So they've been working on that, so we gave them an overview, and also asking them for their input and their feedback on what would those graduation objects of cultural significance be. And so we continued that conversation also at the third session.
The final area of focus so far this year has been in the area of recruitment and retention, and specifically building off of our workforce demographics and identified areas where committee members have expressed interest in trying to narrow the gap in terms of our current workforce as compared to our current student population. So we had a presentation actually last year from our Chief Human Resources Officer Todd Hess and our Recruitment Coordinator Amanda Graham about efforts at that time around recruitment. We still have, or since then I should say, we have a change in staff within Human Resources and have a new Senior Director of Staffing and Operations, Megan Schmidt, who has considerable experience in recruitment and retention, talent acquisition efforts, and a lengthy career in Human Resources. And so she has brought a new area of expertise and focus as to what we can do as an organization to sort of enhance our recruitment efforts, particularly in areas of identified interest, whether it be through a board directive or initiative, or from administration interest, community interest, and that's where we really listen to the folks on the MECAAC committee as to what their various constituent interests might be in filling positions within the school district. So we'll have a follow-up presentation, of course, all of you are welcome to attend at our next meeting, and that will be a presentation by Megan Schmidt about what she's done to develop recruitment initiatives within her department in just the few months that she's been here and what we can expect going forward.
I'd like to add, so Kids' Day is coming up, and I know that we collectively are going to be having a table at Kids' Day, there's 20,000 people that come through that door, so Anchorage School District will be there, providing great activities for our youth to be engaged in, but we also want to showcase the great things that we do here in Anchorage School District and to join our team. So there will be lots of table tent, things that parents can engage with and certainly engaging with our students, along with lottery, but really letting them know that we're a great employer as well. One of the things that I took back and we're doing for Title VI Indian Education, there's actually two things, is we'll be hiring our, we're going to go back to hiring our own student interns for this particular summer, we'll have eight high school students, and I tease and tell everyone, make sure you're smiling and showing what a great time and how wonderful and what an impact you are doing, teachers, to empower and encourage our youth, our high school students to go into education, that's our goal. Hopefully they'll be working towards getting a high school credit during the work that they're doing at our summer enrichment program. So again, we'll be hiring eight high school students, juniors and seniors, for this particular summer. The other one is working and developing our more robust relationships with interns at the UAA level, engaging them again for next school year, so they can help us with our evening program for academic tutoring, and we have open gym, and we also do cultural arts and activities. Again, those students that are at UAA that are interested in going to education, having them someplace where they can do these internships and volunteer hours to meet their credit requirements, so we look forward to that. So these are things that I know that I'm really interested in and our community's really interested in, working with MECAAC and seeing if they have people they want to join in our efforts as well.
Are there any board questions or comments, Ms. Mitchell?
I'm really excited to hear about all of this, I think growing our own will be really key. I think I mentioned to you that I had coffee with a young man who's a first-year teacher, elementary teacher, and he's, grew up in Anchorage, he's Filipino, and he talked about the way he can relate to his students, and it's really exciting to hear about some of these efforts. And I was wondering when the next MECAAC meeting will be and where it will be.
The next MECAAC meeting will be actually coming up here, it's the final Thursday of the month, I don't have the date in front of me, 30th or 31st, I believe, I can check. And it'll be at this location, it'll be, actually, I'm sorry, the 28th, 28th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and it'll be here actually in the boardroom.
I actually see that it's on my calendar, so thank you.
Are there any other board comments or questions? I just want to say that I spent several years on MECAAC and it was probably one of my favorite committees in working with individuals from diverse backgrounds. How is our membership, I know that we, are we seeing an increase in membership from the community?
To the board president, we, it's been about steady from, I believe you visited our group at least twice last year, and we appreciate that, I would say it's been about steady. We did have some turnover in terms of our at-large membership, filled a couple spots that were vacant toward the end of last year in the administrator group, so, but I think as compared to last year to this year, it's about the same in terms of attendance. Most of the roster spots are filled, but we don't always have perfect attendance.
Thank you. Thank you very much, both of you, thank you for all your work. And I think next we have our board, any board conference or committee reports, I think all of our committees are meeting here soon. When is your next meeting, Ms. Mitchell?
The Governance and Communications will both be on the 27th, and they're at, Communications is at 10, and Governance will be at 11, and the next Finance Committee meeting will be on April 1st from 2:30 to 3:30.
And the public, again, is always welcome to those meetings. Okay, we are ready for a public testimony, and the board welcomes public comments on agenda items, both action and non-action, as well as in general. We value public comment as it both ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns, and informs our decision-making process. We have a table front and center with two seats and microphones available for testimony when I call your name. You'll have three minutes to testify, and you may begin speaking when you see the timer to your left, and it begins the countdown. When you have 30 seconds left, the number will turn yellow, and when the timer reaches zero, please finish your sentence. In order to provide equity to all that would like to speak, the board asks that there be no clapping after testimony, as it may intimidate others wishing to testify with opposing opinions. And additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The board will consider all information shared by the public, and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to administration for follow-up. And the first person on, these are speakers to be heard on non-action items, is Philip Walters and Dave Carter.
Madam President, members of the school board, thank you for allowing me to testify tonight.
I think so. There we go. Madam President, members of the school board, thank you for allowing me to testify tonight. I would like to address the matter of the policy proposal that was brought up at the last school board meeting regarding the playing of the National Anthem and Alaska Flag Song at the beginning of every week. In discussions of this proposal with other ASD music teachers, it has been further reinforced to me that patriotic music is alive and well in our schools. The Alaska Flag Song is one of the first songs that many of our classroom music teachers teach their students. At the elementary level, multiple concerts every year pay tribute to our country through the singing of traditional patriotic songs as well as folk songs that celebrate America and its people. At the secondary level, students are taught not only to play or sing the anthem and the flag song, but to learn the deeper meaning behind not only what the words mean, but the historical context in which these songs were created. The beauty of this is that every school, every teacher, every class creates a different tribute to America, symbolizing its diversity. I even recall hearing the National Anthem sung in one of our Alaska Native languages recently at the NEA Alaska Delegate Assembly honoring Anchorage's very own Alaska Teacher of the Year, Danielle Ria. Over the years, in my middle school and high school band classrooms, I have taught four different versions of the Star Spangled Banner and two versions of the Alaska Flag Song. In addition, I am one of the directors of a local community band that is comprised largely of ASD students. Every fall, we put on a Veterans Day concert largely programmed with patriotic music. It is one of my favorite concerts of the year. So why are we spending time on this? I grew up listening to patriotic music, my favorite cassette tape was of Pat Boone singing patriotic songs. I marched around my house with my toy rifle from Colonial Williamsburg to the tune of the National Emblem March. My patriotic values were instilled in me by my parents, who are both public music school teachers. We visited revolutionary and Civil War battlefields, I learned about our history from my parents, I learned to love our country from my parents. I fear that this proposal tries to do what some people decrie about public schools, trying to teach values that should be taught in the family at home. One of my proudest moments was performing in a series of concerts shortly following the terrorist attacks of September 11th, 2001. It was my honor to perform patriotic music as a way to say that we would not stand idly by as our country was attacked. We sing and play these songs because we want to, not because we are told we should. To make it compulsory smacks of the darker history of countries like North Korea, Communist Russia, or China, which is something I'm certain we would like to avoid. At a time when we are facing an incomprehensible budget crisis, when our schools are facing a harsh reality like none they have seen before, when children will face being crammed in the classrooms of 40-plus students, when our teachers will be fleeing our state in droves at the end of this year because they have no hope of remaining gainfully employed here, we have many, many things to worry about. A lack of patriotism is not one of them, because that void simply does not exist. This is merely a distraction from the real disastrous issues that we currently face. Thank you.
Okay, and if I could have Cheryl Childers up next, please.
Are you ready for me? Hi, so my name is Dave Carter, I'm a retired attorney here in Anchorage, resident for many years. Our, it's Islam, I guess it is, our parents and grandparents would have pledged allegiance this way. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." And that really is how the pledge should be given. Christians should not have been allowed to sneak under God into the pledge, as they did in the 50s, less than 70 years ago. I'm not making this up, you can verify me on Wikipedia. Students should be given this factual history. Students should also receive factual and objective teaching about religion, Board Policy 6141.2. They should learn about blasphemy laws in the United States and the colonies, such laws did not exist only in Muslim-controlled countries. These are factual and objective matters, omitting them from the public's knowledge base affects critical thinking and reasoning, and this information helps to explain why the founding fathers excluded the establishment of religion by our government. Some people might say, with reference to God, in the pledge and elsewhere, that there's no harm in letting people continue believing in religious supernatural mythology, but there are many examples of how this is harmful. There are real-world, modern-day consequences. There are people who do not vaccinate children or get health care for themselves or their children because they have been told to believe God will take care of things. They send money to preachers who promise things preachers cannot deliver. John Oliver's Televangelist YouTube video is very revealing, I recommend you look at it. Some people send thousands of dollars. Some factual and objective teaching about religion might help some families decide whether it is better to see health care providers or give money to preachers instead. We owe this much to the current generation. Omitting highly relevant information, such as that "under God" was just inserted into the pledge in the 50s, can deprive students of information which they need to think critically, just as much as providing only a partial history can deceive them into thinking adults actually believe in spirits, defying gravity, impregnating women without biological contact, and all sorts of other things that just don't make sense. It is not the role of public education to serve religious interests by deceiving students or the public by omitting factual information about our heritage. It is this continued interference in critical thinking that's necessary to make good decisions, both public and private. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could have Jessica. Mingas, thank you. It'd help if I put my glasses on, I'm sure.
Thank you, Anchorage School Board members, for your service to Anchorage's students. Tonight I speak to you as a U.S. Air Force veteran, a retired educator, and guest teacher in the schools. I understand that Memorandum 120 has been sent back to committee. I listened to the testimony already presented on this topic and realized the voices of other veterans should be heard on this matter. I understand that there are some in our community who don't think Anchorage schools are patriotic enough, so let's define patriotism, a love for or devotion to one's country. This then begs the question, will listening to the National Anthem create more patriotic students and staff? Might there be other means by which we might encourage a love of country? For our students, I believe this idea of love of country has its foundation in a love for their schools, followed by a love for their community. If we ensure that all students in ASD have the same opportunity for an excellent education, and we welcome all students with love, enthusiasm, and a willingness to go the extra mile for them, they will love school. If those same students upon graduation are also embraced by our community with good, safe housing, and jobs that they can help support their families with, then they will love our community. At some point, if our students believe that they have the same opportunities as everyone else, I believe loving our country will come naturally. No amount of listening to the National Anthem will do this. Being active-duty, retired, or a family member of a military person doesn't give one license on patriotism. Just like waving our flag or singing the National Anthem at a ballgame doesn't mean someone loves their country more than their neighbor who doesn't. Just look at the Oklahoma bomber and his accomplice, both veterans of the U.S. Army, or even more recently, Christopher Paul Hassan, the Coast Guard Lieutenant charged with stockpiling weapons and drugs in Maryland. At some time in their lives, people would have called them patriotic. Today I started my day in a first-grade class with, "Come join in the circle, moon, moon, the moon and sun, come and join in the circle, there's room for everyone. I'm so glad you're here, I'm so glad you're here. Come join in the circle, there's room for everyone." I believe I'll have more success teaching a love of our country and patriotism as defined by Webster's by singing that song that's age-appropriate for six-year-olds, rather than singing, "And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air." I'll leave that up to Anchorage's capable music teachers, they're better suited for introducing the National Anthem than this veteran. I encourage you to let Memorandum 120 be put to rest and focus your attention on putting our students first in your decision-making. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Lessons.
Good evening. Tonight I'd like to talk a little bit about tension. Not tension like tension between two people, but the tension of multiple things being able to exist at the same time. It is, for example, possible to be the proud wife of a Marine Corps veteran, to be Mexican-American and a Jew, to cry at the National Anthem, but to personally prefer America the Beautiful because of the aspects of America that it celebrates, to love the countries of my parents' ancestry, to love the country of my birth, and to want to hold my state and my country accountable for the numerous injustices, educational and otherwise, that we have committed and continue to commit against our indigenous and minority populations. It is possible to be a patriot, a progressive, and somebody who believes that our students deserve well-written and implementable policies from their policymakers. If the school board believes that one of its policies is not being followed, then it should explore that issue and find ways to either enforce the policy, or find out why the policy isn't being followed, and see if that policy needs amending. If, after researching all the many ways in which our schools manifest love of state and country, the school board finds that it feels more patriotism needs to be made explicit in its bylaws, then that is surely something it should add. The school board should research and craft a policy or a policy amendment that is well-written and that considers the diversity in division, age, program, and schedule among our wonderful, varied Anchorage School District, as well as the myriad of other tasks we ask our educators to manage throughout the day. And finally, let me express my eager anticipation at the opportunity to hear each and every person who has testified on this proposed board policy amendment, when they return here, to advocate for ways that we can improve equity for our students, including issues providing transportation to optional programs, increasing the restorative justice practices in our schools, and of course, making sure each and every student receives an excellent, fully-funded public education. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Kelly Lessons, and the clock just started, and I haven't prepared anything because I have a four-year-old at home who has had pink eye and a broken leg this week, so I'm actually really happy to be here instead. So I am here on part and part on behalf of ASD 60, and I wanted to thank the board for creating the Committee on Health, Wellness, Nutrition, and Learning, and also urge you to convene. Carrie Carpenter and I have had a chance to have a number of incredible conversations with people around Anchorage and across our state. We've lobbied care of our LIO office in Juneau regarding activities down there regarding HB 56, and, I mean SB 56 and HB 70. And anyways, in any event, I wanted to say that the community is ready and willing and able and desiring conversations. A couple of weeks ago, when the Sound of Music was here, the entire audience at the Performing Arts Center erupted in laughter when Maria, the character of the Afro-Vestant nun turned governess, right, she's interrogating Captain Von Trapp, and he says, "Well, the kids don't, you know, their mornings are full of schoolwork and then they march," right, the joke's on Captain Von Trapp, because everybody knows, and the entire premise of the musical is that children need play in their day. And so I'm here to simply say thank you for forming the committee, and I look forward to conversations with committee members and continue conversations with pediatricians, had a Special Olympics Alaska, folks in the literacy community, the food bank, teachers across the district, parents, there are a lot of stakeholders here, and I think nobody's against time for recess and time for lunch, but I think we all need to think about how we can make it a priority, how we can really center those moments in time that will more fully prepare our kids, all kids, for success.
Thank you. And at this time, do we have anyone else who would like to testify on any non-action items? Yes, sir, if you would come forward, state your name and spell your last name.
My name is Eugene Carl Haberman, I represent myself. I live in the Mattinsons Valley.
And you also need to, in that respect, connect with people appropriately. And what I mean by appropriately is you do not fast-track items, particularly very sensitive, complicated issues, and you give the public a fair chance to connect before you make a decision. You should not have, example, an item on the agenda one meeting a week ago or one given issue, and then take action the next week. As you know, generally your calendars are like every other week. You skip, so there's a break of 14 days, but I see cropping up situations, you've got on the calendar of an action item, and it was just a week ago that you had it as a non-action item. So this is not giving the public a fair chance to connect. And also notice, I like to state is, and as you know, attend a lot of meetings, is how people sign up. You should have sign-up sheets. Appropriate thing is, non-action items, each sheet, have a list of opportunistic people on that given sheet, page one, page two, three, or whatever, if there's several people. Your sheet's out there basically limited to about a half a dozen lines for people to speak on this subject here, and that's indicating is, the end result is people, is there anyone else who wishes to speak? You can limit that a lot by simply having more pages and having an opportunity for the public to sign up fairly, and that's not happening here. And respectively, the Anchorage Assembly has difficulty there. They don't even have sign-up sheets. Okay? Now, I'd also like to just close with this is, the Assembly, Anchorage Assembly, has committee meetings, and their committee meetings are publicly noticed, and on their committee meetings, there's a place for public comment. I ask you too, is, are your committee meetings not only open to the public, giving a fair chance for the public to be attending, but able to speak and address? There seems to be a question here with what you do as committee meetings and what the Anchorage Assembly does with committee meetings. And a few years ago with my engagement, they put a place on the calendar for audience participation. In a reminder of state law, it says, "Provide a reasonable opportunity for the public to be heard." Reasonable does not mean zero, no chance. So I close with my comments there, and respectfully with my comments, look at how I address these issues with the items that are for you tonight, and are you doing the right thing? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we are going to move to the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Madam President. Generally, we don't engage with public testimony, but I would like to say the first meeting is Friday for the committee meeting here in the district office, I believe at 9:00 a.m. for the Play Nutrition, it has a very long name, so if folks are interested, just let us know. Katie can send Katie a note, and we'll get that invite out to everyone. In the superintendent update, just want to share some information regarding our website and some focus on student success, if you could go back to the agenda. Also about celebrating success, we'll talk about, there were some questions from the board in regard to our nurses. Also, we've had public testimony in regard to OPA and the contracts. I want to share with the board that was presented to you, a copy provided, but wanted to share some items in there, as well as a board member had mentioned just some confusion in pink slips and what that means for Anchorage and the budget. So we're just going to just kind of go through some of those items to publicly share some information. First is student success, and it really talks about the promise of Anchorage, and these are children literally in grades kindergarten through 12th in a K through 12 school at Polaris. And when we talk about student success and the promise of Anchorage and the Anchorage School District, it really is for the faces of our young moving forward. And to that end, we wanted to engage with our students in regard to just a simple statement about what they see as the promise of Anchorage and student success, and so we have highlighted, and this will change, in regard to each week when we ask our students, what is success? And I am the success of Anchorage because of my hard work, dedication, and conditional support of my family and teachers, and this young gal was at baggage. But as you can see, the students at the bottom, they're all different ages and schools, and this again is highlighted on our website. We also have asking our staff to really engage in regard to our district, what is the promise of Anchorage and what does success mean to you, so that we just have, moving forward, the work that we do do, it was mentioned in public testimony as well, in regard to the MECAK as well, that there are good things happening around us, and we want to ensure that we are communicating those. With that, one of the good communications, I wanted to share just some quick wins in school celebration. We asked principals, tell us about your schools, what's happening in them, what are your quick wins, what do you feel as your success in Anchorage? And we did hear from Creekside Park. The principal is thrilled with his just work with the staff. They shared, he shared that he's in his second year of Reach for Reading, and letter sound fluency is very key in kindergarten. We have initially, the first assessment is the letter naming, and generally, kids come to school being able to name letters because they sing their ABCs. It's a song, A-B-C-D, so I cannot sing as wonderful as the public, Ms. Childers. That was wonderful. You have an excellent voice. But letter sound and relating a sound to a letter is more difficult, but that, we know that is a building block of reading. We use an assessment for it. Basically, he shared with his peers that, and this happened in a meeting, that he is proud of his teachers because, you know, of the work they do. They have highly-trained kindergarten TAs. He feels he has a great instructional coach, and they lead, the teachers lead, have themselves weekly meetings to collaborate and review, and although the curriculum is written for every, the priority plan's four out of five days, his teachers have, they move forward with this five out of five days, but he just felt strongly, it's a great success there from Creekside Park. And Tim Andrews shared that. Another great win and a quick success was the principal of East High stood up and said, "I want you to know about my school and the work we're doing." And 55, 59% reduction in office referrals for students for inappropriate behavior has occurred since the beginning of this year, and in asking, we said, "What did you do?" And he just shared that his teachers are amazing. They were trained in capturing kids' hearts in August, and they really came together as a staff to emphasize developing a social contract in each of the classrooms. And four questions that are asked, if you're not familiar, that is just a redirection. So when we have class roles here and kids are going from classroom to classroom, there's just four simple questions that they share, and they say, if something isn't, someone isn't following the social contract or what's directed in the classroom, the four questions are, "What are you doing? What are you supposed to be doing? Are you doing it? And then what are you going to do about it?" So it's non-value, judgmental, nobody gets upset, nobody, you know, questions, it's just, here are some questions, and it's value-neutral so that it's not, kids aren't feeling, you know, like they're trapped in something, and teachers aren't getting upset because kids sometimes don't do what they sometimes are expected to do. So basically, he shared that the consistency of all teachers emphasizing the social contracts and using the questions was really the foundation for their success. We went ahead, I went ahead when he shared this and looked it up myself on our dashboard, which we are going to unveil again next week in a more user-friendly manner, that it's actually true. He's, this school and their staff are really working extraordinarily hard. They did start a foundations team, which is really a team of their own staff deciding, what do we want to do? They look at their own data in regard to, you know, their discipline referrals or really any other topic, and really solve those problems internally that they see, that they see that they'd like to increase. Another teacher at high school shared his MTSS success, I'm having trouble with that word, in English Language Arts, that's what ELA is, and basically shared that they, the data committee meets regularly and presents a data update at each staff meeting, and the teachers collaborate to use the data to say, "What does this telling us? How are we doing?" And in reviewing is map data and identifying specific trends, that they have catch-up growth, which year-for-year growth is expected in a year. If you're in school for a year, you should grow a year. That's our jobs as educators. But when we find that kids fall behind, we really target around our resources around catch-up growth, and they met their catch-up growth by 170%. And they talked about some students, though, still weren't, I think 25% they felt weren't where they needed to be, and so they just looked at next steps of refining the process and continuing to look at it. So just using information that they have at their fingertips to make the best decisions that they can as a staff, so that as a staff, they're reviewing their needs. The needs at service was different than at East. We have fun going on here, and this is really led by our title program, and Karen Haplin really shares it every meeting, which is exciting. They have a Golden Shovel Award, which is just a competition, friendly competition for attendance improvement. And Willow Crest won for February and is working on increasing attendance rates by increasing the personal connections with parents and students. That is their school goal, excuse me?
Yes.
Yes, Willow Crest, yes. When students are out or late, what they shared was that we tried to make it a point to tell them how happy we are to see them, that we miss them when they're gone. And that really came from the engagement survey. Our students, really elementary and secondary alike, in our climate and connectedness survey, it really made, when I talk to teachers and any staff, really, it made us sad to understand that one of the questions on there, and it wasn't about teachers, it literally asks, when I am absent from school, someone from my school will miss me. And about 50, 48 and 52% of our kids, depending on their level of school, say no. That, and teachers and, you know, principals and the folks that we worked with on this were just heartbroken because of course we care about them, and so one of the things that was an improvement was that when kids are gone, make sure we say, "Boy, class just isn't the same without you," and just feeling that connection with kids, and hopefully trying to change that outcome. So the teachers were really interested in that, but they're calling parents. And finally, they really relabeled absences that are due to services received outside of the school. So a lot of our students receive medical services on a monthly or bimonthly basis out of school, and we really want to be honest about, those aren't absence, those are different kinds of absences than just not showing up. So we wanted to be sure to be accurate, but the teachers are having fun with the Golden Shovel Award. So that's just the quick updates of successes. We're going to continue to talk about those things because we understand, and I'm just reading on this, I don't want to get too much on a tangent, but a lot of times, we're faced as school districts with, we're either doing well or not doing well, and really seeing success as binary, as just yes or a no, is really, is doing us a disservice, that of course there's areas to grow, but of course we are getting better every day. Our schools are great places, we're working together, there's, we do great things for kids, we're building ourselves professionally, as was shared at the work session, and there is a path that although you might see a data point that might look bad, things aren't bad, that things are getting better, and we are working really for the goodness of kids. So we're going to continue to share that so that we share our successes out there. The second question that was asked really was in regard to ASD nurses and some of the changes that are going on. We would love to do a work session on that. We have our director, John Garrity, available, but some of the bigger, just the big idea to share with the board and then in determining when you'd like further work on this in a work session, is in regard to our changeover to the nurses' electronical medical records. We made a change about two and a half years ago from Zangle to Q, which was really a forced change because of the company supporting it. So we had to move over to Q, and it was a large-scale change when everyone in the district, every employee touches Zangle. We went through some growing pains there. At that time, it was noticed that Zangle cannot do what was needed really at the health service level, and so I just wanted to share that, starting in September of 2017, last fall, the nursing group began to look at vendors that could service the medical records as well as really reduce the variance in our documentation that occurs. We were doing everything by hand, and so really setting up a system that would help nurses get to do really nursing things, be more efficient, as well as lower the variance in our documentation. Four vendors were looked at, two were immediately written off because other districts, they had given feedback that said, "Actually, we have them now and we're ready to leave them." So I believe a group of about six to seven nurses, IT, administration, PMO, studied for the last 13 months, looking for a database system that could actually answer some of the questions. So some of these are, the selection was made with Health Master, and just some of the benefits were slated there. As you can see, the Zangle really was non-responsive, but the VACTrak compatible is the state system for vaccinations, and we previously had to enter in our own documents as well as VACTrak, dual entry of vaccines. We still will have to do that with the base schools and the base hospital, but all other, the majority of other hospitals and doctors in the state of Alaska use this to track so that we won't have to have double entry. But some of the primary care norms are provided. We will, again, it supports with vaccines, it supports with medication, notifying parents really electronically when their medication's running out. It has a parent portal. It has the ability, and this is a concern, to bill a third party. Presently, we do through special education, bill a third party for occupational therapy, speech therapy, and physical therapy, and that's within the suitable allowable Medicaid billing for the state of Alaska. However, outside nurses who come and do services like our nurses do in the schools can bill medical billing, but our nurses cannot for some of those same services. That's a law change at the state of Alaska. If it changes, this system is set up to do it. If it isn't, the medical billing can't occur simply because it's not allowable by law. But we, John Garrity's here, he can answer any questions that you have, you know, even today, or we can set up a work session to go over this. But this is a change for efficiencies and a change in the system for, as we changed over Zangle in regard to Zangle to Q, the health part of that would move to Health Master to assist in the process. So that's that update, and also there was another question, and we had some excellent testimony on the difference and this, the concern for OPA servicing students at Service High School. And as we shared, it really was, it's pretty a complex issue because it was one company, separate companies. This year, there is a phase-out of both companies because they've split ways. I did share the contract, there was, I believe, a request for the contract, so I shared it anyway in the, to the board, but there is a provision, and we've also shared this with Service, that of course the contract, and if you could take a look on item 10, article 10, it's called the term and termination. It really shares about the term of the contract, which was some of the questions, as well as the termination, and simply by all of our contracts that we have in ASD can be agreed upon by both parties for a material breach, and so if the services are questionable or we're not carrying through, that would be an opportunity to bring up this contract with the OPA who currently holds the contract through the RFP process. So it isn't set in stone, it is about the service that ASD receives in regard to meeting the needs that are at service presently, for which they're being serviced by another orthopedic organization. So we're following up on that, and the board does have the contract to take a look at that. And I believe, oh, so the last question was in regard to, it was shared that perhaps statements made, whether it was in the newspaper or on the news by myself, would, are confusing in regard to teachers as well as looking at pink slips. And pink slips is the, you know, the contemporary word for reduction in force, because it generally came in prior years on a pink slip, that we don't really have pink slips, but there are provisions for reduction in force, and in fact, in all of our, whether it's at the state level and statutory requirements or in each collective bargaining contract. What we have before us is some data that was shared. These data were in response to the board's understanding and request, as well as the city's request, to understand what are we talking about when we look at a reduction? What really does a 25% reduction to ASD look like? And if you start But there are, there are provisions for reduction in force, and in fact, in all of our, whether it's at the state level and statutory requirements or in each collective bargaining contract. What we have before us is some data that was shared. These data were in response to the board's understanding and request, as well as the city's request, to understand what are we talking about when we look at a reduction? What really does a 25% reduction to ASD look like? And if you start all the way over on the right, where it says the governor's amended FY20 budget, that is approximately 25%. And presently, in funding for K-12, it's in two different provisions. It's in the foundation formula, which each child, the BSA number, the base student allocation, which we call the BSA, is $5,930. Last year, there was an effort to increase education funding. It was tried to, the, the initial bills tried to increase the foundation formula. However, in negotiations between the House and Senate in the conference committee at the end of the session, the agreement was, rather than placing additional funds in the foundation formula, the House Bill 287 funding occurred, which was essentially a $20 million improvement or statewide adjustment to education funding that we received this present school year, and we call this FY19, fiscal year 19. It also had an additional $10 million for FY20. And our board passed a budget on that assumption, that the foundation formula was $5930, and that we would receive House Bill 287. In the meantime, there was a drop of a governor's budget that had a significant decrease. The House Bill 287, as well as the foundation formula, are tied to local funding. So the top of the chart would be the reductions in the formula alone, but because the foundation formula also dictates local funding, the local funding would have to be reduced as well. And so those are the numbers that you see before you. If a 25% reduction would take place, it would be 105 million, almost 106 million. If it was only a 1% reduction with the elimination of 287, you can see that that is about 14 million. You increase that by 4% to give 5%, the amount didn't increase by four times or five times. What happened was, if you see the value of 287 was pretty significant compared to 1%. So a 1% reduction is only 3 million, but House bill was 8 million, 8.4 million. So that's the difference in the amount of money. So we really wanted to share how, I mean, it's very complex, the state funding and how they would affect ASD, not only in a 1% and a 5%, as well as a 25%, but also in regard to local contribution. I don't want at the end of the session for us to feel good about, wow, we only had a 5% reduction in education. And so therefore, I wanted to really demonstrate that two years ago, there was a proposal for a 5% reduction that ended up at the end of the session, leaving it flat-funded, but significantly just understanding what that looked like. And understanding through people, our board has not made any, and even had the discussion about what would go if we had to reduce by 105 million or 30 million, what would that look like? What would the educational services look like? We have not engaged in that conversation with the board. The board has not done that. What we have done is shared information on the cost of, of total programs. We've shared. Elementary education is $124 million. We've shared. The music program in ASD is $4 million. Activities are this. Principals are this. District office, the superintendent, the chief, chiefs, as well as the school board, we cost $1.6 million. So we shared the large-scale costs. Also, what we wanted to do was to just share, if you took these reductions and just layered them across every section of our school district, this is what the reductions would look like in FTE based on the present salaries in those jobs. It doesn't mean that if we had a 25% reduction, we would take 20, you know, the portion of that at 25%. Maybe for instruction, and what would be the suggestion, instruction, special education, our teachers in classrooms, we would say, we're not going to do any more than a 10% reduction in that area. The discussions haven't been had, but if you were to equally take the 25% or 1% or 5% and spread it across all functions of the district, those are what the reductions would look like based on the salaries, which are in this next slide. We did provide the data of the mean salaries, the average salaries in each of these categories. So we have different units for bargaining, and ACE, our supervisors, managers, in ACE would be our JROTC are in there as well. So we have just different school employees, as well as district-wide employees that are supervisors, managers, and others, that the average salary is 98. And that is not, that's salary and benefits. So that's insurance, retirement, as well as salary. So that isn't what folks are putting in their pocket and taking home, but that is the total cost of the employee. We shared also, what is the layoff timeline? Because these are real to us. If we get to the 11th hour and don't have a state budget, we have to make some decisions globally as a district. The layoff would begin with the least senior employee. So we're, I wanted to share for the board, as well as our public, as well as every employee and parent out there, every stakeholder of public education, that a reduction would really take some time and some, there's some complexities here that interface with state law that we need to begin to think about. In AEA, or the Anchorage Education Association, there are teachers, librarians, and nurses. So it isn't just teachers of the classroom, there's also other school functions that are set in there. And generally, you can think of them as certificated people that have to get a state certification. And the average salary there is 105. Again, it is not the take-home pay of folks, it is salary and benefits averaged. For this, the actual date is May 14th, so we would need to give notification by May 14th to our tenured teachers in the last day of school for non-tenured, if there were to be a reduction in force, or what, I think the question came from the community about a pink slip. Again, it doesn't mean that we would look at taking all of our loss to the district and placing that over people in the classrooms. In fact, I think the board and the community has been very clear in that we want small class sizes, we want teachers that, that is the, the protection area for which the budget this year specifically was built. We did not have reductions in the teaching staff. Where we did have reductions was outside of that teaching staff in, in the present budget. So APA principals, you can keep going down, custodians and BPOs, warehouse and maintenance, totem are aides and office workers. And then exempt employees are people who do not fall under a contract, have a 30-day notice, including myself, which is, the mean salary there is $145,000. So in an effort to understand, you know, tenure, pink slips, what's going to happen, there has not been a determination that all of the reductions would be taken in the classroom, if you will. In fact, our survey suggests otherwise, for which we built our, our budget on. But there are very complex idiosyncrasies in the whole process of a reduction in force that we would need to follow. At the present time, I've really balanced in being very general with the information and not selecting different people because we have to care for our employees, they're working, we have to be realistic with them and not be alarmist. We don't know what the House and Senate have said about their budgets. And what we know so far is that they, and, and a senator sat in front of us, said, we are going to rewrite the governor's budget. Well, in that case, let's find out where we are, because especially the children and the teachers who are in classrooms, the last thing we want to do is have the fear that tomorrow you're going to lose your job. When we get more information, whether it's principals, custodians, really anyone in our schools, they're people of our community, and we need to take care of them and give them the, the most updated information that we know, be informative without being alarming to them. And so my actions have been broad, discussions, broad sharing of information internally as well as externally, without sending an alarm to said, everyone, please, you know, I don't want people going home every night worrying about the state of their job until we have more information. And the board has actually started the discussions in regard to what, what if there is a 5% reduction, what if there is something? So I hope that this shares really the actions that I've taken in communicating internally as well as externally with the facts of where they are, so that the, the best power that we have in influence is for folks to have the information themselves to move forward. And so I wanted to share that, that if there are any questions from our staff or outside in regard to pink slips or reduction in force, we can share those because we want to provide the information so families can make their decisions. But the last thing we want to do, we lost 10% of our teachers last time there was a reduction in force that took place. It was non-tenured teachers, I believe, the first and second year. There are other jobs for people out there, and we, we lost our, our folks. And are rebuilding back up our, our workforce, and we want to keep, we want to be that great employer that we talk about. So hence, the information. And all of this information is on the website, we are willing and able to share. And as soon as we hear in regard to the House or Senate dropping their budget bills, we will certainly get that out to our employees as well as our families and communities quickly. That concludes my superintendent update.
Any board questions or comments?
Ms. Mitchell, and then Mr. Holloman.
I just really appreciate you putting together these numbers because I think it is important to just have an idea of what types of decisions we are going to have to make, what the magnitude of these numbers is. So people can, you know, it's hard to think about big numbers. What does, you know, $100 million mean in the context of our budget? So this really starts to get people to understand what, what the situation is. And you, you and the administration did a fantastic job of putting together a budget based on HB 287, based on the promise that was made last year. And when we were in June, oh, a few weeks ago, we heard from legislators that they would like, you know, they made that promise last year, and they really would like to honor that. So I think that many of them, you know, that's what's in their hearts, and they really want to keep that commitment to our children. But even within that budget, we were able to take some money from our reserves, we were able to take some money that we had from a couple of fortuitous events this year, but we still had to make some cuts, even with that, the increase that HB 287 provided with 30 million outside the budget. So I, I just think it's important for people to know that even flat funding, if, if we were to just maintain our BSA and the 20 million that was given last year, that it's still, we have inflationary pressures, and, and so hard choices have to be made every year, and we just try to keep them as far away from the classroom as we possibly can. But everything does contribute to a functioning district.
And Madam President, through the President, I just want to be overly clear that that 20 million plus the extra 10 for total of 30 is statewide. It is not just for Anchorage. Statewide money. So Anchorage is, again, our portion was about 8 million, if you totaled it up.
Mr. Holloman.
I was just going to say, I think it is a very difficult thing to convey how uncertain the situation is for everybody. Uncertainty does lead to the workforce being worried. I mean, it has a real impact. But I do appreciate the numbers that you have put out for folks to look at. One of the things that, that I've seen a lot, or had people ask a lot, is why we cut teachers first, over and over again. And I think it's important just to, to say it publicly, we have to make a decision on teachers in May. It's not that that's where we want to start, but if we don't cut teachers in May, then we are obliged to pay them for a whole year. And, and if we wind up short of money to do that, we're in a really awkward situation. I know everyone on the board is going to look very hard at keeping the maximum number of teachers we can in the classroom. But the level of uncertainty we face in this budget cycle is unlike anything I've ever seen before. And I've been watching it kind of carefully for about a dozen years.
Mr. Donnelly.
President, I have a question about the nurses.
You're not on.
No.
You can be the one next to him.
There you go.
Okay, try that one. Okay. You mentioned that this new program would have a potential to allow for billing records if the state law was changed to facilitate that? I just wanted to understand that more. There's also a lot of federal law, I think, that impacts how our nurses, you know, would, would record time spent with our students, in that federal Medicaid especially has real strict limitations and guidelines about what counts, what doesn't count, what qualifies, what doesn't qualify. And I just wanted to make it clear, there was no intent at this time to have our school nurses do that, do any of that kind of billing procedure?
I, I can call our, our director up, John Garrity, to speak specifically to it. But there, there isn't at this time. It does have a provision, but interestingly enough, we do have school nurses, and then we also have nurses that really tend to specific health needs of children, medically fragile children. And if there is, and they can, my understanding of this is, we presently have outside nurses who are servicing kids inside our schools, doing the same job as some of our nurses do with other students, and they are allowed to be billed. But our nurses do not bill presently because it's disallowed. But this just, this program has a provision, not just Medicaid, but other insurance billing. You have a potential to do that, to be able to efficiently and effectively log your hours. But I'll turn it over to our experts to share the actual detail of that.
That's a great question.
I think it's, it's true, the, the program, John Garrity, I'm the Senior Director of Healthcare Services. So the Healthmaster program, its primary function is to document healthcare for the students. But it has the additional ability that should, in the future, we be allowed to, we can just turn it on and process the billing, same as we do for special ed, for PTOT and speech therapy. The, when the program is established, it's the same as you would see in a physician's office. For the provider, they don't see any of that. They are just properly documenting that they care, that they render, and everything else takes place behind the scenes. But right now, the...
I just want to clarify that, if I could. You know, provider's office, there's experts there that get extensive training on medical coding, so it doesn't just magically happen. The doctor's not, when the doctor or the nurse sees you, they don't have coding expertise, they write down what they did. Somebody else in that office has to be, have the technology and the sophisticated training to properly code that.
Yes.
So it's kind of get, you're saying that a program would do that?
So the organization, the, the vendor, one of the additional things that, capabilities that they have, is they are the agency that sets up the coding and the billing and reviews it for compliance prior to it being passed on to the, to Medicaid or whoever the insurance company is. It's the same process that we're using for special ed, that they go and are using Power School, and they document in Power School, but then they have a consultant, another agency, that reviews for compliance before it's passed on for the actual billing. In this case, it would be the, the vendor also provides that service.
Well, I just, I have a concern that it's, I think it's fine to attempt to capture funding for medical services that are non-school nurse-related, but I want to really have a deep dive into the appropriateness of looking at that being expanded to the individual school nurses. The type of services they're, they're providing are public health services in addition to individual care. A lot of the individual care is in very short time periods that doesn't match up to ordinary medical coding or billing or Medicare compensation. And it's just going to raise a lot of issues that I think need careful examination. So while it may be appropriate for some of the services that are being provided that are more like ordinary medical care, I think we have to be very careful and consider very carefully the implications before we would expand that to the individual school nurses in the schools.
So this is not designed for the student who comes in to get a Band-Aid or Tylenol or their daily dose of Ritalin. This is the student who has an IEP that requires speech therapy, occupational therapy... This is the student who has an IEP that requires speech therapy, occupational therapy, and also a, a non-normal medical procedure. And that is the exact same, that is what the outside nurses, when they come into a school, are performing and they are billing for, that we are not allowed to bill for. We are not looking at the standard kid coming in to see the school nurse at all.
And, Mr. Holloman.
So are you saying in those cases, a, a nurse wouldn't use the program then? They would still use the program and they would document the same, but there would be no billing taking place for, you mean the student who's just coming in for a Band-Aid or something? Right. Right. No. That's just standard, that child had a stomach ache or something. We're not going to bill for any of that, but we'd still document in Healthmaster. And that's not done with codes or, or anything? That's just writing what they did? You, the, the program has a drop-down menu that the nurse just selects it and it defaults and it has a code, but the nurse, we don't click the button for it to pass through as billing. We only do that for the students with a, an IEP, those that we've identified.
And, and could you explain when you say outside nurses?
So if you, we have one or two students that the parent has preferred. This student at home receives nursing services for sustainment of, as part of their care plan and a nurse is with them at all times. And it's done by a private home care organization. The parent has expressed that for continuity of care, that, that nurse that's providing the care at home also comes into the school and provides the care. And we accommodated that. And what we found when we did that was the home care agency, because the student was receiving the care at home, was able to bill for the service that they were providing in school. When that same student was coming into school and being seen by an Anchorage School District nurse, we were not allowed to bill for that service.
Ms. Mitchell.
So you said there's one or two students like that. I guess, you know, the, and it sounds like this is an initial conversation, but I would like this to be on a work session and I just wonder about what types of things our nurses are doing that would be able to be billed? How, how many incidents of that are there in the district? And I know that when I take my children, well, I only have one who's under 18 anymore, but when I take them to the doctor, I have to sign, it's the HIPAA form, I think. And so in order to, because when you're billing, you have to release the student's information, their medical condition, a lot of very private things about that student, right, that are covered by the Health Privacy Act. Are, would you, how would you gain that permission from the parents?
We already have that permission from the parents for the students in order for us to have that conversation with their primary care provider to ensure that we are providing the correct care. And it comes with their care plan. So that, we have, we've already, you know, accomplished that.
And those parents would know that you would be using the information in this way?
Yes.
And how many, how many students are in this situation that, do you know what the numbers are?
Not off the top of my head.
Is it 500 or?
No, no. We have 20, 25 students that we provide direct care services to.
And, and I just want to, through the President, like, we're spending a lot of time on this, but it's not even allowable by the law. I mean, you're, you're not allowed to do this right now. So it's just that, I think the bigger concern from nurses is that they're actually moving to an online service to track services, which I believe in the 21st century is probably appropriate to do, that it does call into some efficiencies for medication and, you know, documentation. It's actually built in to protect also our school district as well as individual nurses in regard to services that are provided. It has some nifty things that, you know, many of our, our nurses who come to us from, from private sector have already used. It's, it's pretty normal, you know, we have a student, what do we call it, a student information system? It's a student, it's, it's our student information system built for health. Presently, we had it in Zangle, but there were some questions in, when we moved to Q that it couldn't do for nurses. So at the same time, we have, to be honest, some nurses that haven't ever, you know, used technology in their service, kind of trepidatious about it. And at the same time, we have nurses who have used this all the time saying, thank goodness you're, you know, getting with the system. So, you know, we want to bring everyone along and have them comfortable in their job, similar to really the, the process that we worked with, with, with Q. I mean, moving from Zangle to Q was, was pretty difficult, but once we got there and we got the training and people were more comfortable, it's, it's, it's good. It's, it's, it helps teachers rather than hurt them. So if you guys wanted to comment on that, that, that's the information.
And just to introduce myself, my name is Ryan Thrasher. I'm a project manager in Project Management Office. I was involved in the, the rollout of Q Health two and a half years ago, and I will state that many of the concerns, namely VACTrack integration, were big concerns that were brought up while we were rolling out Q Health. That has been addressed with the Healthmaster Health Office Anywhere product, so we're definitely moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Madam President. That concludes my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Always informative. At this time, we're going to move forward with our consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda, which includes ASD memorandum number 126, the Personnel Report.
Second.
Student vote?
Yes.
Members vote? They need to vote.
Are they?
All right.
They can. They can just. Alicia just voted. Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Now I'm waiting for Elisa.
Waiting for Elisa.
Does she want to vote verbally? Okay. It is 12:30 in the morning.
Okay, and that motion passes with five yeas and two no President vote. Before we move on to action items, I'd like to read our statement and it's actually the procedures for agenda item testimony. Action item memo is first introduced by the Vice President, if seconded by another board member. I'll open the floor for testimony. If you've already signed up for a certain action item, I'll call your name. I will ask you to come to the front table to speak. You have three minutes to talk and we'll see a timer on the screen to your left to monitor the time remaining and inform you of when you need to conclude. After all testimony closes, I will open the floor for board discussion, followed by the student board representative vote before finally calling for the official vote. The voting results will be displayed on the screen to your left.
I, oh, right, thank you. I move to approve ASD memorandum number 137 and adopt the attached resolution in support of the Chugiak Eagle River Ad-Hoc Committee Recommendations for Earthquake Repairs, Seismic Upgrades, and Roof Replacement of Eagle River Elementary in the amount of 12.1 million and Greening Middle School in the amount of 24.2 million for a total amount of 36.3 million. The committee further recommends the formation of a separate ad hoc committee to address long-term programmatic issues at Chugiak Eagle River Schools.
Second.
Okay, and at this time, we have Kaylee Watrung, Watrung, no, I don't sound that right, and Michelle Foss.
My name is Kaylee Watrung and I'm here to talk about Greening Middle School. Greening was built to house 7th and 8th graders. Prior to the November 30th earthquake, there was discussion about moving a group of about 100 6th graders into the building. They would be selected through the lottery system. Right now, we have a disparity on what is offered to our community's 6th graders. If you happen to fall into the Mirror Lake boundary, your child can be bused. If you don't, you have to lauter for a seat and drive your child to school. Otherwise, your child remains in elementary. To many families, it doesn't feel equitable. Do you on the board realize that families struggle with the decision of what to do for 6th grade? They're concerned. Does it hold their children back academically or socially to stay in elementary school? And it doesn't get past the kids either. If you stay in elementary for 6th grade, there's a kind of social stigma. Back to Greening. The number of classrooms, the layout of the hallways, the square footage, the whole floor plan reflects the fact that the school is not able to house 6th, 7th, and 8th. Is moving 6th graders to Greening once it reopens still on the table? As a member of the ad hoc committee, I voted no to repairing Greening Middle School, not because I don't want Greening back as soon as possible, but because I don't think it's a good way to invest our time and money. We need a bigger, better-designed school that can fulfill the needs of the community.
I'm sorry, I'm going to let you start over. Do we need to take an at ease?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to, and we'll start your time over again. I apologize.
Okay.
But we're going to take a five-minute at ease because there's conversation going on.
I don't know what that means. That's okay. I was kind of wondering myself.
Was it last Monday about the long-term committee?
Hi.
Hi.
Because of the cost, like adding, basically it's about the cost, like doing so many 24 minutes or evening. But I was doing so good. It was like, I was, I was, I was nervous.
You couldn't hear?
Yeah.
It was your whole trip.
Yeah.
I know.
The committee, yeah. Yeah. Okay, I wasn't there.
Well, not at the school, but actually the Monday that we had the Congress Special Meeting, the 11th.
I mean, I think they'll work well together, sort of, hopefully.
Mostly I'm concerned, but now that I've done half of it.
Right. Just start from the beginning.
While they were talking, I was kind of thinking, hey, that's super rude.
Super rude.
I, I almost said it myself.
I need more time.
If this happened in my classroom, I'd be like, hey, you, shh, shh. See, now I need water. I feel really strongly about this, so. I talk to all of them now. See, last week.
Okay, we're going to call this back to session and I do apologize, we're going to let you start your testimony over again and give you your full three minutes. Board members, if you would return.
I'm hoping that you'll really absorb it, is actually what's happening.
Okay. Are we ready? Yeah. You can begin.
Okay. I'm here to talk about Greening Middle School. Building was, Greening was built to house 7th and 8th graders. Prior to the November 30th earthquake, there was a discussion about moving a group of about 100 6th graders into the building. They would be selected through the lottery system. Right now, we have a disparity on what's offered to our community's 6th graders. If you happen to fall into the Mirror Lake boundary, your child can be bused. If you don't, you can lauter for a seat and drive your child to school. Otherwise, your child will remain in elementary. To many families, it doesn't feel equitable. Do you on the board realize that families struggle with the decision of what to do for 6th grade? They're concerned. Does the, does it hold their child back academically or socially to stay in the elementary school? And it doesn't get past the kids either. If you stay in elementary for 6th grade, there's a kind of a social stigma that goes along with that. Back to Greening. The number of classrooms, the layout of the hallways, the square footage, the whole floor plan reflects the fact that the school is not able to house 6th, 7th, and 8th graders. Is moving 6th graders to Greening still on the table? As a member of the ad hoc committee, I voted no to repairing Greening Middle School, not because I don't want Greening back as soon as possible, but because I don't think it's a good way to invest our time and money. We need a bigger, better-designed school that can fulfill the needs of our community, housing the other half of our 6th graders, the half that doesn't go to Mirror Lake. I don't believe the public has been accurately informed about the limited amount of funding that could be covered by FEMA and the state and how much of the bond funding may be shifted from other buildings to provide fixes to this building. I don't think it's a financially responsible expenditure of tax dollars. Fixing instead of rebuilding just to get kids back into a building more quickly is kicking the can down the road. Would you personally invest so much to get something that didn't meet all of your needs? Would you spend two years to get something that didn't actually solve your problem? I urge you to vote no on the resolution, which offers only a quick fix to this building in order to fully investigate alternatives for housing a full body of 6th, 7th, and 8th graders that previously would have attended Greening Middle School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, members of the school board, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name's Michelle Foss and I'm a teacher at Greening Middle School. I've taught in the Anchorage School District for 21 years. I've been fortunate enough to be a teacher at Greening for 19 years. I'm testifying tonight to ask you to reconsider the recommendation of the ad hoc committee about simply repairing Greening Middle School with seismic upgrades. Greening has had issues since it was built and although I wasn't there at that time, I have seen the issues with our roof, our plumbing and heating system. We've been put on bonds and removed from bonds more times than I can remember. We've had to evacuate due to plumbing issues, the heating that gets to my room at the end of the hall about 1 o'clock and is turned off, turned down at 3:30. My students often have to wear coats to class. We've had trash cans in the halls catching leaks as they run down, as the water runs down the walls and in student lockers. And I personally have watched the pipes, which for some unknown reason are outside of the walls, sway and move during the day. As Kaylee mentioned, we were recently talking about adding 6th graders to our school, but our building is simply not set up for that. We welcome the addition of 6th graders to our school, but we do not have the current classroom and other locker, bathroom capacity for more students. All of these problems have been ongoing and then on November 30th, there was an earthquake. Now we have a gym that is sunk, walls that are separating, walls that have shifted, stair walls and ramps that aren't attached, and quite possibly more damage that hasn't been discovered because the ground is still covered with snow and ice. I've been in our building since the earthquake occurred and I've been there during significant aftershocks. Our building literally groans. Many of our staff still are afraid to go back there. We all survived the earthquake, but we need to go back to a building that's fully healed. A repaired building with seismic upgrades does not even come close to fixing the many problems that Greening has. In fact, at the last board session, it was stated, we do not have the funding to address all of the needs that Greening has. My questions to you are, if you're not able to address all of the needs that Greening has, why would you consider only repairing some of the problems? Why are you considering partially fixing a building when you have the chance to actually create a school that meets the needs of our community? Why are you willing to put a Band-Aid on a building that will soon need a replacement? Why are you willing to put our students back in a building that was a problem even before the earthquake? I understand decisions have to be made quickly, budgets, construction seasons, et cetera, but I ask you to carefully look at moving beyond simply making earthquake repairs and seismic upgrades. The school building needs
Is this the way you go ahead with a complicated issue? The more complicated issue is, the more known, the more opportunities the public to be heard. Now, what are we talking about, schools? I still haven't seen the answers to questions that I addressed a few days after the earthquake is, are the existing schools, not just the schools you mentioned here, in high-risk areas? And should we allow building and rebuilding in high-risk areas, these schools? Those answers have not been addressed appropriately. What I have seen, meetings like the ad hoc committee, I'm still asking, getting, trying to get answers to questions, is, are those ad hoc committees meetings taped? Because I don't see it online. How is this public supposed to be connected? How is the public be opportune to speak? Because I don't see any place for the public to speak at those so-called ad hoc committee meetings. Is this the way you connect with the public? Is this fair? Now, I understand there were other community meetings out there on the issue. Yes, but in all fairness, you do it in such a way with a video audio setup like you have right here in this room respectively, for the public to really see and witness what's going on. And you do it at a time, a day, when the public has a fair chance to address. Now, I also noticed the ad hoc committee, not the ad hoc, excuse me, your previous board meeting had a two-page document. It was in color, charts, whatever. You have this meeting on this item, a two-page document basically, typed, but no chart. How come you don't tie the two together, that you have the example, Exhibit A1 and Exhibit A2, both there at this meeting? It's not there. So, I also want you to also know is this, that there are bonds, and this is connected with the earthquake, concerning schools, for the voters. But those bonds, the voters are being told that if you do not use that money, then the boards can decide to use it for something else. Is this the way to go and ask for money dealing with school rebuilding? You say, "We're gonna use, you proved this, and this is the April bond deal. And we can change the rules and use it for something else if we don't want to use it for something else." The right way and right approach for those voters who are about to go and vote in this election on bonds and deal with earthquake is that if you're not gonna use the money for that purpose, you go back to the voters and ask them to vote again to use it for the other purpose you decide to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open it for board discussion. Mr. Holloman.
And I guess this is a question I probably should have asked earlier. But in returning buildings to November 29th, I'm assuming that they come out actually better than that. But it might be good if one of our administrators can speak to that directly. I, I think I understood what was meant by that statement, and I did not take it literally. But I should make sure that you're not being literal about it.
Sure. Madam President, through the President to Member Holloman, may I, in the absence of Tom Roth, I have requested George Vekalas be present to answer questions to that regard. This is George Vekalas, and George, if you can restate your name for the record, as well as just share your function involving this dimensioned assistance with FEMA and the like in this.
Yes, ma'am. For the record, my name is George Vekalas, and I was hired by the district as a consultant to deal with several different district items. However, in this particular case, one of my taskings was to help represent the district with FEMA and help the staff prepare for FEMA's look at the damage and for their determination regarding reimbursement.
And can you just share the information in regard to the process, the buildings, what they would look like?
Yes.
In regard to the improvements, and certainly we have our senior director, Tom Finisep, here as well to talk about the specifics. But just to maybe recap and address what's happened since the meeting, there were two, I believe, ad hoc meetings, then there was a board meeting, and now this, and understanding the timeline and whatnot.
Correct. Be glad to, thank you. So, just so everyone understands, that the staff was briefed on what some of the FEMA requirements were, and they were told what FEMA would be looking at. As a result of that, and to make sure that we looked at all avenues, because at the time, it was unknown as to exactly what condition the two schools in question were in. It was not known whether they would have to be torn down and replaced, or if they could be fixed in place. So, what the contractor, the A&E firm, the architectural engineering firm, was tasked to do was take a look at those two sites, as well as 13 other sites that were in less damaged condition, and to look at three things. One, what would it take, what would it take to bring that school or those schools back to the condition that they were in prior to the earthquake? Keeping in mind that because they were damaged, and in order to get any type of reimbursement from FEMA, they would have to bring them up to current code. So, that was item number one. What would that cost? Item two, they were asked to look at, okay, you've looked at that part of it, now, what would it take for us to go ahead and put in mitigation efforts to deal with what went wrong as a result of the earthquake? Because there's two different programs that FEMA runs when it deals with mitigation. One is that if you go in and you make a repair to a damaged area, then you can reasonably not only claim to bring it up to code, but you can also claim what it costs to mitigate. Now, if FEMA disallows that, the other route you can go in mitigation is to apply for a direct grant dealing with mitigation. So, they were look, they were told to look at that as the second alternative, but in addition to that, they were looked, they were asked to look at other seismic upgrades and a fix to the roof, realizing that a fix to the roof, because it was a pre-existing condition, would not be funded by FEMA. But it was a plan that the district had on the books in the out-years. So, if you're going in to make major repairs to the existing building, then it makes sense to go ahead and replace and redesign, redesign and replace the roof. So, they were asked to give us numbers regarding that as well, which they did. The other thing that they were asked to look at, if in fact, the building has to be replaced, what will it cost to demolish the existing facility? And then number two, what will it cost to build a new facility? So, those were the numbers that was given, that's the tasking that was given to the A&E firms. And they were tasked to do that on all the other schools as well that they looked at, with the exception of the replacement. Because the other schools, it was known that the damage was nowhere near as significant as what we're dealing with, with Eagle River Elementary School and Greening Middle School. So, those were the taskings. The committee, the ad hoc committee, of which I was a member, tasked to be a member of that committee, was apprised of what the dollar amounts would be for those three categories, and also what it would cost to demolish a facility. In the debate, there was all kinds of questions and concerns that basically arose. An awful lot of the questions and concerns that came up had nothing to do with the building being replaced, but had to do with programmatic concerns. You've heard a couple of them today. Some of the other ones had to do with overcrowding. They had to do with transportation. They had to do with issues that some schools were allowed to have certain programs and others were not. Case in point, Chugak High School versus Eagle River High School. Because of the size of the two schools, it was perceived and realized, assumed, that some schools were offered some things that other schools weren't. Chugak High School was offered more different programs than was available to Eagle River Elementary. Had nothing to do, I'm sorry, Eagle River High School, had nothing whatsoever to do with the construction or replacement of the schools, it had to do with programs. So, after much debate, the final motions were to go ahead and fix Eagle River Elementary School, and fixing means not only code upgrades, but also do additional seismic upgrades and fix the roof. That was Eagle River Elementary. Eagle River Elementary, as you know, was also on this current April bond to have the roof replaced. So, the money was in that bond, assuming that it gets approved. That's what was approved for Eagle River Elementary. Greening Middle School, what was approved for that by the ad hoc committee that went before, before you all, was to go ahead and bring it up to that middle level, and again, I'll explain what that was, not only to bring it up to code, but also to do mitigation, also to redesign and repair the roof. Now, in addition to that, because there were some mechanical issues that also were indicated that needed to be fixed, that also is included within that middle step. In addition to that, yes, they've had problems with insulation, and yes, they have had situations where it's been cold in that building. But an awful lot of that had to do with the roof. The roof does not have the standard insulation that is now required by the district. So, when that roof is redesigned and rebuilt, it will also have the increased R-factor for insulation in that roof, which will also assist in the heating of that facility, as well as ductwork and everything else that's planned with this, with this recommendation that was made to the board. And then the third aspect of the recommendation that was made to the board was that the president establish a committee, an ad hoc committee, to look at the programmatic, the programmatic concerns that were raised. My understanding is, as being a committee member, that the president of the board has tasked the administration to form a committee of subject-manner experts dealing with all of these different programmatic issues that were raised, to meet with the community, find out what all these issues are, and then a date to be established to come back to the board with recommendations on all of these concerns. Is there any other questions?
Thank you, that was quite thorough. I do want to share too, some of the pieces of information that have come up, just from my research into this issue, is, and our senior director, Tom, we now have a capital projects that is operated on the district side of the House. Interestingly enough, what I found out from the history was that that establishment at the district, rather than the municipality, occurred because of the problems that they had with Greening. And really during that time in the 80s, so much building was going on during the boom time, that architects from outside were used, that weren't used to our weather. So, interestingly enough, the reason that ASD even has a capital planning program is because of the original issues with Greening. Some other items in discussion in regard to the recommendations is that when Eagle River High School was finally approved, the community knew and was told that these two high schools cannot be identical, that they will, the splitting of the economy of scale, if you will, would, would make some changes. And every, you know, opportunity that could bring them up to having, you know, similar programs would be made, but there might be times that they just have to share students and move them back and forth with programs. And presently, we do that. We also do that with the middle college as well. You know, kids can go to multiple schools. Another interesting fact is that the district's original plan for Greening, when it built, you know, it built Clark as a middle school, it built Baggage. So, we heard some comments about Greening was never built as a middle school, and that's true, it was a junior high. When they built Mirror Lake, the plan for the district was to, was presented forward to move all schools into a middle school, and especially out there, have them both be middle schools. But because the design wasn't around pods and that architectural, that the community, you know, just shared, no, we want to keep a junior high and keep our elementary. So, it was actually a community effort, and Crystal Kennedy shared with me that she was a member of the public at the time, not the school board, who really fought for Greening to stay a junior high, that they fought, you know, vigorously for that. So, now, the information is opposite, where there was, you know, there might be discussion in regard to the community wanting a middle school now, and how can we really adjust a school to be a middle school with those, you know, architectural designs, pods, and things like that. There are middle schools in our district that don't have pods, that weren't necessarily built, you know, to be that, and they've adjusted. But really, the, you know, my point is just sharing that over time, what the desires of the community are, have changed, and that hopefully that this ad hoc committee that we can work with and say, where are we? Originally, early on, it was just discussed, and it was actually really internal by principals who shared, boy, by the time kids are, it's really difficult for us to not have a shared teacher, a double-grade-level teacher in 6th grade. A lot of times, we have to have a 6th grade, a 5th grade, and then one 5, 6, shared, because our kids leave us to go to middle school, because there's different music, there's different sports programs. Elementary schools are not middle schools, and they are not designed that way. So, they, we really just discussed how, you know, principals came forward and said, boy, it sure would be nice to see if the community wants this again. And internally, we never moved forward more than just sharing, you know, share with your staffs back, what do you guys think? Would you want to just have a trial of maybe 100 students at the middle school at Greening just to see if you like it? If parents choose it, we would really just offer a choice to parents whether they wanted middle school or not. So, really, those efforts were not planned thoroughly out, they were simply responses from parents, as well as principals and teachers with, hey, have we ever thought about this? So, actually, administration was moving forward with, you know, here's some ideas we could do. We could do a lottery, we could do this. And that actually came from one of the principals that said, how would you determine who, you know, I thought it was a great idea. So, but we, once the earthquake hit, nothing in that manner was moved forward, because we had other priorities. And so, I just wanted to share that. We're willing to work with the community, but the community's desires over time, which is appropriate, because it was the 80s, and the 90s probably when the high school was built, that it's, it's really, actually in 2000-something, because it's only about 13, 14 years old, Eagle River High. We can readjust and retalk, but those, those buildings and those programs weren't set without community involvement. In fact, they are the way they are now, due to the community involvement. And so, we're happy to reexamine that and move that forward with changes that we can make. Some of those ideas can come to fruition, some of them are gonna be affordable, some of them are gonna be smart to do, others might not. And really, we don't have unlimited resources. We know that. We just talked about the budget, we talked about FEMA, we talked about actually our community having come forward to actually pass a bond. Given the limited information we have, we certainly want to work with the ideas, but we are not cash, we don't have cash flow. I mean, we're not plush with, we could do whatever anybody wants. And so, I just want to keep that in perspective, that the willingness to do that, what we've already done, but the, the parameters really put on us financially due to the situation. So, this decision was a financial decision to reopen buildings and to keep buildings, because the cost, Mr. Finisep, what was the cost if we had, do you remember the total if the both buildings were to be demolished and rebuilt?
$119 million.
Yep. And that's the difference between the ask of $36 million and $119 million for the entire community to pay that. school was built, that it's, it's really, actually in 2000 something, because it's only about 13, 14 years old, Eagle River High, we can readjust and re-talk, but those buildings and those programs weren't set without community involvement. In fact, they are the way they are now, due to the community involvement. And so, we're happy to reexamine that and move that forward with changes that we can make. Some of those ideas can come to fruition. Some of them are going to be affordable, some of them are going to be smart to do, others might not. And really, we don't have unlimited resources. We know that. We just talked about the budget. We talked about FEMA. We talked about actually our community having come forward to actually pass a bond. Given the limited information we have, we certainly want to work with the ideas, but we are not cash, we don't have cash flow. I mean, we're not plush with, we could do whatever anybody wants. And so, I just want to keep that in perspective, that the willingness to do that, what we've already done, but the parameters really put on us financially due to the situation. So, this decision was a financial decision to reopen buildings and to keep buildings, because the cost, Mr. Penisoff, what was the cost if we had, do you remember the total if the both buildings were to be demolished and rebuilt?
Hundred and nineteen million.
Yep. And that's the difference between the ask of 36 million and 119 million for the entire community to pay that, given legislation right now that doesn't want to approve past bond debt? So.
Ms. Mitchell?
So, I have a couple of questions. Thank you for reviewing that again. I was not here last Monday, and I was listening in, but it's just not very effective. So, a couple of questions. I know that, so it sounds like from what you just presented, that if we do pass this, that greening, the HVAC issues, the plumbing issues, the disparity in heat, all of those things will be fixed?
So, what will happen is it'll be insulated, the duck work, there'll be duck work done, the plumbing will be fixed, and it will also be earthquake strapped, so that if you did have another earthquake, that they wouldn't shake loose and leak, or pour glycol onto the floor or water, either one, that will be done. Also, there will be an improvement in heat. Now, the boiler, it's still functioning, so the boiler will not be replaced at this time, because it still is functioning. So, those are the type of things that will occur. In addition to other seismic upgrades, code upgrades, and I want to dispel one thing that I did hear. Early on, when contractors are in there working on Grooning, there was a statement made by the contractors that the floor basically had sunk to the degree of over four inches during the slope of that entire gym floor. When the A and E firm went in there and put a laser level on it, there was only three-eighths inch difference, which could have occurred upon settlement when it was first built. So, it was nom, it was very, very nominal. And so, not enough to even be concerned with. What the concern was, is that they did have a stairwell that separated from the wall. And that stairwell will be replaced, the ground under it will be basically stabilized, and a new stairwell will be attached to the wall. There was also comments at that time that they thought that there may be unstable ground. When the A and E firm went in there, they could not confirm that there was unstable ground. In fact, the reason that they had some wall damage in other areas or disconnect really was not necessarily related to the ground, it was related to the roof, which was connected to it. And that's what separated. So, during this seismic bracing, there'll be extra bracing put in there, up to code, so that the likelihood of that happening in the future with a like-type earthquake would be minimal. But I think all of us know that under the right conditions, and with the worst of the worst, as far as earthquake, no matter how much you earthquake a seismically, you know, proof a building, that the forces of nature, you know, over time, could, you know, devastate that building. But the one good thing about it is that the seismic level, the damage control level of this building is being raised to a 6.5. Right now, our facilities are at four. So, that's a significant increase in damage control for that building. So, there's an awful lot of things that's going on in that building, over and above just the damage that was done. And I think all of us here should realize that, so.
And of the 24 million, do we have any idea FEMA is going to cover any of that?
So, I will tell you this, that if you looked at the total cost of replacement, it's 35.2. And because it can be fixed at 12.1, the rest of that money's off the table. FEMA will not. If we chose, as a district, to go in there and replace that school, they will not fund it at that level. They would fund up to perhaps the 12.1 between them and the state. But again, we're going to have to justify everything that we're doing to them.
I would like to just share, the numbers that you gave for the 12.1 and the additional money is really for Eagle River?
Yes.
Greening was 24.2.
That's correct, 24.2 and 83.8.
Right. And total was 36.3 for both, to fix, to rebuild both?
And 119 to completely, yeah, brand-new facility.
Just because we're talking about two schools at the same time, I wanted to.
Ms. Mitchell, let me just see if there's any other board members that have any comments or questions. I know Ms. Hildy's on the phone. Does she have anything?
Thank you. Can you just talk about the timeline on this and why, you know, some people are concerned on it coming quickly? What, is it for a timeline for FEMA that we're coming to this decision quickly?
No, actually, it's at the, not at the request, but an awful lot of concerns during the meetings and during the town meetings and everything else that were held, had to do with getting those schools back into operations so that the kids would have some type of normalcy, back to where they went to school. Now, I will tell you that the A and E firms are recommending to us that we should plan on a 24-month period of time for those schools from design through completion of all of the construction. And both of them are being estimated at 24 months. The reason that the district is trying to get something on the street is because, as you know, we have a very limited and small construction season, number one. Number two, right now, it's not the right time to go out and trying to get engineering firms and/or contractors to basically do a project, you know, starting this summer. And you're better off doing it the fall before that summer. However, because of trying to get this done, and the other factor that we have, we don't know how long it's going to take FEMA to do the pre-approval. Now, they call it a pre-approval, and they say that any RFP or any contract that deals with these schools, if we want to get reimbursement, they have to look at them first and give us comments on them. And then, obviously, that implies that we would basically correct whatever it is to meet their needs and their comments. So, we don't know how long that's going to take, but I will tell you that we've had the documents ready, and we did send them to FEMA. We had a meeting with FEMA last Thursday for four hours, a training session with them on procurement. We made a point at that time that we had documents ready and that we did not want to hold up the construction season, because it's limited here. And they did assure us that if we got them to them before they left, which is going to be tomorrow night, that they would at least review them and give us comments. They were provided to them last Friday, and those particular FEMA folks that would be going through and doing the analysis of our product, they leave Tuesday night. So, we're hopeful that we'll get some feedback from them before they leave Tuesday evening.
I'd just like to comment also at our last special board meeting, that I think when we talk about greening, we also, I mean, I was on the committee, that when we first looked at that school and some of the deficiencies. And my understanding is that you guys are going to look at those past reports and bring to the board anything that we might be able to include in this, even if it requires extra funding?
Well, that's part of what, that's part of what this RFP process is. We have a whole list of things to look at in that school, and this would be the ideal time to go ahead and do it, realizing that an awful lot of those were preconditioned, you know, pre-existing conditions, and they won't be covered by FEMA. But the practical sense and the economic sense says, do what we can now.
Right. Okay, thank you. Any other board, Ms. Mitchell, you have anything else?
Yeah, that's good. So, I guess the only other thing that, and I know that the committee, unfortunately, I was not able to attend any of the meetings, but the only other thing that I'm a little bit sensitive to is that our last board meeting, I believe, or maybe two board meetings ago, Senator Von Imhoff was here and talked about, you know, trying to find deficiencies and possible consolidations. And I know that's a very sensitive topic, and I'm sure the committee has looked at that, and I'm assuming that there's no, there's no logical reason to think about that at Eagle River at this point.
Through the president, to Member Mitchell, actually, that was brought up here, as well as at the Senate Finance Committee in Juneau. And I offered to really share some information in regard to the data that we have from the last year with Tom and Tom and George moving through Western demographics and their suggestions, and some of the items that had come up in the past in regard to inlet view, and I shared this with the senator, it's in an email, I sent it today, so our board has it as well. Some of the ideas that had come up in the past was about inlet view and central, and that the information came back in regard to that they actually have plans to build up in the city, and that more space would be needed. To address that, we have Central Middle School that isn't used to capacity, but we're moving a school padaya of over 200 students into Central for next year to share space. So, we're using that efficiency. We also did receive information in regard to consolidation of base, that there actually is additional space on base schools. And the board has not only closed a school in 2017 on the base, but we look to, the board moved to close a school in 2019 as well. And even with the readjustment to other schools on the base, we'll still have about 65% to 70% capacity on base schools, so there's still space. With the changes that we made in Eagle River, the data from the demographer, as well as from ICER, showed that the growth in the buildable land is actually north of the city. And so, we did talk to Aklutna, who has some land there. Within the next two years, it was already approved by the city to connect water, the water system, to that land, it's out Powder Ridge. So, our report actually demonstrated that the growth is in that area. When we redistrict and rezoned at the last meeting, our students, all the schools out there are 89 to 105% full now. So, we don't have additional space moving into next year. I mean, there's not a lot of wiggle room, and that's why the idea about keeping two schools, it probably would not go over well if we sold these schools, toured these schools down, or got rid of them in five to eight years, when we look that the Alaska economy moves. The information that we actually received by an outside third-party report, as well as from some evidence-based ICER and the district or the muni themselves, said that that's actually the growth area. So, we did actually use the information that we had at our fingertips to determine that having two schools there is efficient and economical, not only for, as we move into next year, but if you look out 10 years, to go back to the voters that we had a quota of 119 million after we get rid of schools, if we would need them again, because the buildable space is there, you know, we just don't know the future. And those of us that lived in Alaska a long time, it's a boom and a bust, a boom and a bust. And so, if we've lived through that, we need to keep that in mind, that if Alaska's open for business, as such as the governor has shared, we actually will need buildings in the Eagle River greening area.
Any other board comments or questions? Mr. Dongley?
Yeah, to address a couple of the public concerns. Number one, I agree it's unusual to do it this rapidly, but I think there's good reasons to do it. Normally, I'd want to see that delay the normal two-week process, but I think we're trying to get this done as an expedited manner, and there's intergovernmental considerations, as Mr. Vekalis testified to. Secondly, I'd like to address the issue that was raised about the specificity of the bonds. You know, Bond Council approved that this bond is unique because of a once every 50-years earthquake event. And when you can get something through Bond Council, that's pretty amazing. And even Bond Council recognized that the circumstances we're faced with here clearly supported additional flexibility with this particular bond package, because the timing had to be put forth before we knew what the costs were going to be to deal with the earthquake damage. And so, that's why this particular bond is more fungible than bonds we've had in the past. And I'm a strong advocate for bonds accurately reflecting what's going to be, what the money's going to be utilized for. But in this circumstances, we've got an earthquake. So, it's just a very unique circumstance, and I think it's completely appropriate to be more flexible in this circumstance.
Thank you. Okay. I think we're ready to vote. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. We can have our student vote, please?
Yes.
Thank you. And if board members would vote, please. And that passes with six yays and one not-present vote.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 133 and authorize the superintendent to accept a grant award from the Alaska Mental Health Trust Authority for $40,000 to implement mental health consultative services in three preschool classrooms for the remainder of the 2018-19 school year and for the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Is there any public testimony on this action item? Okay, any board discussion? Ms. Hildy, Ms. Smelling, do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Okay.
Not at this time.
Okay. We're going to move with a vote, student vote.
Yes.
Members, please vote. And that passes with six yays and one not-present vote.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 131, the selection of Vesak Durst Sizer Architects as the designer of record for the Orion Elementary Roof Replacement. Additionally, the administration recommends that the school board authorize the superintendent to enter into a contract with BDS for professional services in the amount of $513,939 for the purposes of design through construction administration.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any testimony on memorandum 131? No testimony? Is there any board discussion? Ms. Hildy, Ms. Smelling?
No, thank you.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Student member, please vote.
Yes.
Board members, please vote. And that motion passes with six yays and one not-present vote.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 124, the adoption of springboard published by College Board as the English Language Arts instructional materials for grades six through eight.
Second.
And I do have Tom Claymire signed up to talk about this action item. If there's any other testimony, you can come up here and join him.
Thank you, Madam President, school board members, Madam Superintendent. I'm pleased to report today that the Anchorage Education Association is so far very pleased with the process the district has followed throughout the six-through-eight English Language Arts adoption. While the Professional Learning Department was required to adapt the six-through-eight ELA curriculum review to comply with the new contract language on the instructional program input process, we appreciate and commend them for having already initiated many of the suggestions for improvement gleaned from AEA member testimony at board meetings and open bargaining sessions in reference to the previous K5 ELA implementation. Of course, a more formal review of that implementation is also underway per the contract, and we're confident those findings will be incorporated as well. The PLD is as interested in that data as we are, and so, we look forward to that. While these two committees are working in parallel, the six-through-eight ELA adoption is our first opportunity to implement this new contract language. And again, so far, we are pleased with the district's commitment to that process. In fact, this joint effort should be celebrated as a success of the collective bargaining process, which created a new collaborative, open procedure steeped in best practice, including all stakeholders, and giving the educational practitioners genuine voice in the process. AEA has been involved in the selection of members of both the six-through-eight ELA selection committee and the steering committee, which is receiving special training on curriculum implementation, in part funded by AEA, so we're also putting our money where our mouth is in that regard. Timelines have been appropriately extended to allow proper piloting of the program to problem-solve in advance, instead of after the fact. Time for educators to learn and practice within the curriculum and receive proper professional development. Lastly, the committee will be also developing an evaluation process, which is critical of. Lastly, the committee will be also developing an evaluation process, which is critical in promoting continual feedback and measuring effectiveness. Hopefully, this results in further ongoing refinement and improvement, all ultimately to help ensure improved student achievement. Therefore, I encourage the board to accept the committee recommendation to adopt Springboard as the English Language Arts instructional materials for grades 6 through 8, and look forward to the continued work of the committee as we progress through the training, implementation, and evaluation phases which follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Mr. Donley?
Yeah, I'm concerned that some of my, what I thought were pretty basic questions weren't able to be answered during the work session on this. One of the questions I asked that I found the most concerning was, did we have an example of another school district in the United States that utilizes this proposed curriculum that has successfully used it, that also has adopted our existing elementary reading curriculum? And that wasn't done, and I think that would be a real basic thing that I would want to know as a policy decider on this, if there was an example out there anywhere in the United States that had been successfully implemented. So, that was one of my concerns with moving ahead with this vote at this time. I really liked that additional information. So, I don't feel really comfortable with this yet. It's a big decision. It's going to have a huge impact. We need a new reading curriculum for these, and I have received some comments and opposition to this. And it also wasn't clear when I asked the question, what was the actual vote within the committee to approve this? We weren't given numbers about that either, just how many of the members of the committee voted in the affirmative that this was the proper choice. And that's pretty basic information I'd like to have before I made this decision also. So, I feel uncomfortable moving forward with it at this time, and I'd like to get that information first, but I'd like to hear what other board members think before I pursued that.
Alisa, you have a question?
Just a brief one. I'm sorry that I was not at the work session or called into the work session. As I'm reading through the memo and looking at the timeline, the one thing I don't see, which I normally do see, is a funding source or a cost associated with it. I don't see that attached to it, so I'm just wondering, is this just the approval of the curriculum only, and we will be brought back a cost associated with it, you know, at another meeting? Or how does this work?
And I think we have two individuals that will be joining us, and they'll state their names and position, and we'll be able to answer that question.
Yes, Madam President, I requested Dr. Knudsen and Dr. Bellamy to come forward to share additional insights from the work session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Madam President, I'm Jenny Knudsen, and I am the Senior Director of Teaching and Learning. As far as the funding for this, this was included in the general budget that was approved in February as a line item for curriculum and instruction.
And can you just restate what the cost was?
I think we put in, how much did we put in, Andy? Huh? 1 million in there for curriculum and implementation, and that would be for a six-year period of time.
Dr. Christina Bellamy, Director K-12 Teaching and Learning. Relative to the inquiry about the number of votes that took place, I explained in the work session that of the 36 members that were present, the final protocol that was utilized to identify which of the remaining two programs that were being considered at that time were to rise to the top. People were given a choice of how to spend $5 or five votes, per se. We gave them five, actually post-its, and we had criterion based on our IMET rubric, the Instructional Materials Evaluation Tool. And in that rubric, there were criterion and non-negotiable criterion that are used nationwide to identify those pieces of curriculum that are important in ensuring that our students are getting what they need out of the curriculum, that those pieces are available to all students and are evident. It was a very close, it was almost split, almost equally, as we explained, because both programs, both My Perspectives and Springboard, which were the final two, are both very rigorous and robust programs. So, we then went back and looked at the totality of the evidence that was gathered in various forms. We had pilot or field test, I'm trying to address my language around that, but we had some field tests where teachers and students were utilizing the materials, where the people who were implementing in those field tests felt Springboard was very robust. Some of the other programs didn't rise as high as Springboard did. And then, when we look at where we really want to build that, you talked about K-12 alignment, we really wanted to look at what is it that we want for our students and for our teachers, what are teachers saying that they wanted? And Springboard has some very robust structures in it for strategy building for students, access to AP strategies, not just for some, but for all kids. And so, the totality of that evidence that was gathered and looked at by the review committee is what sets Springboard apart. To answer the second query relative to what school districts out in the United States are using both Cengage and Springboard, as a 6-12 curriculum, we do not have that information available to us. We would have to mine that data by looking at those school districts that are currently using Springboard in the middle school, and we would then have to individually mine for the elementary programs that those districts were using. So, that is why that question could not be answered at the time. However, we did bring Diane or the other K-12 director to the microphone to talk about the very detailed and in-depth work that she and members of that new K-5 committee are doing in looking at and building a sixth-grade bridge plan that is very specific to the strategies that we are having students and teachers use in the fifth grade with our newly adopted curriculum, tailoring it to our ASD students and teachers with their input and voice to really build a robust transition.
If you could just pull back from the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
They're built for like six inches away, just so that it's clear.
Okay.
Questions? Mr. Donley?
I find it hard to believe that a provider wanting us to pay $1 million for this particular program wouldn't be willing to do the mining on their own to identify those school districts that were utilizing both our current elementary curriculum and this one. I think they would jump through hoops to give us that information to get a million-dollar So, why don't we ask?
So noted.
Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you so much for answering all of our questions this afternoon and also this evening. Is, to address Member Donley's questions, would it put us really behind in our timeline if we did wait until the next board meeting, or is there an urgency to voting on this tonight?
Well, getting materials to Alaska is quite a chore compared to the Lower 48, so it would postpone that timeline, basically. So, in ordering materials for the pilot schools and making those determinations, setting up contracts for professional development, it would delay that a little bit.
Okay, yeah, I do know, looking back at, with the Cengage, I think the board made the decision in April, and then the materials didn't get here in time for summer.
Now, granted, we're going to start with four pilot schools for next year if this is approved, so we don't have the volume that we're talking about, but there is a sense of urgency in getting it through. We started the process in August and have kind of gone through, took a little pause because of the earthquake, and restarted as we went through. To get to your point, Mr. Donley, I think we would have to contact both vendors and do some crosswalk between finding out which districts kind of do both, and that might take some time.
So, I have a question. And I guess I come from a kind of a software background when I was software manager or third-system party software at Alaska USA. And whenever we did an RFP and we looked for a new vendor or someone to provide something for us, one of the things we always asked is, who else has used this, and can you give us, you know, how does it work, give us their name or number so that we can contact them and get a reference or find out what's going on with the product? And you guys have done a great job, don't get me wrong, but did we ask that?
Yes, we did. And we both talked to other school districts, and we sent a team down to one district that is a similar size to actually see it in action and learn from them what they would do differently if they implemented it and what went well, so that we could learn from those. That is something that we haven't necessarily gone to that step in previous adoptions and visiting other districts that have done it. But that is exactly what we wanted to know, because we can glean from others and learn from what went well for them and their mistakes, and so. But I don't know, they weren't using Cengage as far as an elementary program.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this time, if there's other comments or questions, Ms. Hildy, Ms. Snelling?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. If we could have our student member vote, please?
Yes.
And if board members would please vote? And that motion passes with six yeas, one nay, and one not-presented vote.
Madam President, thank you for allowing me to make a comment. We will work towards the two pieces of information, specifically on the specific data in regard to the voting, as well as working with the two vendors to match up where this possibly, with the amount of textbooks in the world, we might find a match where they've, you know, used this in an alignment. But this allows us to get started in conversation with the vendors, and I believe there's time to be able to report back before anything is ordered. This will just give us the initial discussion time that we need with the vendors. Thanks. And if there's any other questions, we can get to that.
Thank you. I felt confident with the answers that were given, so thank you.
I move to approve ASD memorandum number 136 and adopt a tentative agreement between the district and the Teamsters Local 959 food service, which will establish terms and conditions of employment for individuals in this unit during the period July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2021.
Second.
Is there any public testimony? Please come forward. You just state your name, please.
Sure. My name's Dale Miller. I'm business representative with Teamsters Local 959. Thank you, Madam President, member of the board, superintendent of mission. Thanks for the opportunity to come for you and talk today. I'm just here to discuss for just a minute about the negotiation of this agreement. You know, we understood that there were some budget issues out there with the school district. This budget does not fall under the general budget. It's kind of in its own, but that doesn't mean that there aren't fiscal responsibilities that need to be met. And so, I think that both sides understood that as we moved forward and, you know, kept that in mind as we were doing this negotiations. It took us quite a while. I think mostly it was just timing issues. It wasn't so much that there were a lot of disagreements. I think it went fairly smoothly. We had some significant changes that, for instance, contract's been around a long time, and these were significant changes to how we look at the agreement. I think there are good changes, but it just, the moving parts of stuff took some time, and then, you know, a late start and that kind of stuff. So, I do appreciate the fact that the board, notwithstanding some people's desire to slow things down, I appreciate you guys moving forward with this pretty quickly. Feel like that it's a very responsible agreement, and that it was approved overwhelmingly, the majority of the membership approved this overwhelmingly. So, I want to thank the district's bargaining team, and Mr. Hess and the rest of his team. I think that they were responsive to our questions and providing us information, that kind of stuff, so I would just urge you to vote yes on it, and pretty much all is good.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Anyone else?
My name is Eugene Carl Haverman. I represent myself. I live in the Mattson Valley. Follow the public process. Public process is not appropriate. Decision made by the governing body is more likely in the public interest. First, where do I begin? Now, it's a general statement, but it's on topic with this one. As you know, we're in a state budget crisis. We've got about 105 days before we may have a real idea of what exactly the state is going to deal with, and what money is just going to go to the school district and Anchorage and so forth. So, is this time to deal with labor contracts with an unknown situation, and we are in a budget crisis? It's real. It's been real for a few years, but we have not dealt with it appropriately, and we continue. What we need to do is, everything needs to be on the table. All labor contracts need to be reviewed, and we need to not have a situation which is exactly what you are, I'm hearing from here and out in the borough with the school district, is, well, if it gets bad, we're going to do pink slips. And that's not fair either. We're not facing reality on the state budget crisis. We're continuing on proving situations where more monies are being allocated and approved, and this is an example of one of them. And I'm not saying this particular labor group doesn't deserve what's being proposed here, but we need to look at the bigger picture. And the bigger picture is the financial situation, the state, and what money are we really going to have 105 days from now, approximately? Now, also, I can't help but notice, and I don't like the scenario of this line, where, unless I'm reading this wrong, it's backdate to July 1, 2018, June 30, 2021. I was brought up, you don't backdate contracts. You start with a date. That's the future, not going backwards. Is this fair? And the last part I'd like to address here is this. What I don't see clearly in this document is exactly what is this going to cost the school district in dollars to the existing budget, what's out there, and how it projects from the next few years. What is this commitment? What are the dollars? You see the different things in rates or whatever, grades or whatever you got in this thing. But the fact is, we got a, you got a budget here, and what are the commitments that this school district is going to be committing, and how is it, how is it going to connect with the overall picture? And thank you very much, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
And with 13 seconds to spare.
Thank you. Okay, any board discussion? Ms. Snelling or Ms. Hildy?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. If we could have student vote, please?
Yes.
And would board members please vote? And that passes with six yeas and one not-presented this time. So, now we're going to move on to our non-action items. There's only actually one. I'd like to pull that, if that's okay, so we can have a discussion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. So, what you have in front of you is a resolution that Fairbanks North Star School Borough sent So what you have in front of you is a resolution that Fairbanks North Star School Borough sent us, and what I'm finding out is most school districts are doing their own resolution about the budget, and either how they're not supporting it or supporting it either way. And then we also have the resolution that was proposed by Mr. Dyson with, I think you'll see in red, well, I don't know if you guys see that, but there is some changes to it to make it correct in the first paragraph. Okay, yeah. Let me get these passed out, hold on. And basically, it just says, and you guys will have it in a minute, but whereas Anchorage has the largest K-12 school population in the state, approximately 47,000 students, one of the 100th largest districts in the nation, with approximately 16% of its students learning English as a second language, having 106 languages spoken in students' homes, and approximately 7,150 students with an individual education plan, indicating how many students with a disability receive special education and related services. So those were changes that were made for accuracy. So my question today to the board is, do we want to pursue our own resolution, or do we want to adopt some of the language that is within Mr. Dyson's? I think Fairbanks has already submitted their resolutions, so we might be a little late on that, and given that the Alaska Association of School Boards has made the comment that all school districts are doing their own resolutions, do we want to move forward with our own resolution or not? Ms. Mitchell.
Well, I do like the idea of a resolution explaining what our position is as a board. These two resolutions are a little bit different. One addresses the state budget, and then one addresses a change in statute so that Anchorage could contribute more to the local Anchorage School District. So they really are related, but two separate issues.
Any other comments on writing a proposed resolution? Mr. Holloman?
I see no reason not to support the assembly. In essence, not necessarily create our own resolution on this, but support what they're doing. But as to the funding issue generally, you know, I think we should do our own resolution on that. But having Mr. Dyson's resolution and just showing our support for the assembly action, the assemblies really appreciate their disposition and looking to do what they can and be ready to take action depending on what happens.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mitchell.
So, Andy, would that take the form of a letter supporting their? Would it be something we would submit to the assembly, or would it be something we would submit to?
I guess there would be a resolution supporting the resolution.
Okay, okay. I just wasn't sure what that would look like.
Okay, so I think we're in, I'm assuming we're in agreement, I haven't heard from Mr. Donnelly or Ms. Snelling or Ms. Hildy, but in supporting the assembly resolution by writing the resolution supporting the resolution? Yes, Mr. Donnelly?
I want to thank Assemblyman Dyson for offering this. I think it's a good resolution, I think we should support it.
Okay. And as far as writing our own resolution on the funding or proposed budget, would board members want to pursue that? Just kind of a, I mean, it's not an official vote, but... Mr. Donnelly? Okay. But you're part of the board. Okay, so...
I think that it's going to be important to take the advice, or to consider, at least consider the advice from the co-chair of the Senate Finance Committee that was offered at one of our previous meetings as we move forward in that process.
So do I have anyone that would like to help write that resolution? It's your opportunity, Mr. Donnelly.
I mean, it probably makes sense to do it in the Communications Committee.
Okay.
But I would welcome Mr. Donnelly's help, he's probably done quite a few of them.
Okay. All right, well then we will move that on to Communications Committee to address both of those. I don't know if they're still in line. Alicia, Ms. Hildy, and Ms. Snelling, do you have any comments?
What is the action that we're doing here? I'm just a bit confused.
It's proposing a resolution, or actually moving it to Communications Committee, to propose a resolution to support Mr. Dyson's resolution, and then to look at writing our own resolution as a, as a school board.
So we're not pushing Mr. Dyson's resolution to an action item? Or you're just going to committee to talk about it?
It's going to committee to form the resolution so that we can present it to the board for a vote.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So at this time, is there any new business? Yes?
I'm not sure what the timing is for Mr. Dyson's resolution. Would this be something that we would then get approved at our next board meeting, or...
Yeah, this is going, yeah, this is actually going tomorrow night, his resolution is being presented.
So can we just agree to write a letter saying we support the resolution? Does it have to be a resolution? I know I'm getting a little into the weeds, but...
Yeah, I, yes, Mr. Donnelly?
There's a real quick procedural thing called a sense of the body, and if we as a group agree that we like that resolution, we could just vote as a sense of the body that we support it, and then we could transmit that, transmit that information just by an email or something quickly to the assembly, so they would have that information when they considered this tomorrow night.
Okay. Ms. Hildy, are you in agreement with that?
That, the, no, what you told me last time?
No, Mr. Dyson is submitting this resolution tomorrow during the assembly for approval, and we'd like to show our support, not necessarily with the resolution, but maybe we could just give a verbal or send an email stating that as a school board thanking him and supporting his resolution.
No, that's a great idea, I appreciate him taking the initiative to do that.
Okay, great.
I would, I would move that the Anchorage School Board take a position of support in favor of the ordinance, well, the resolution, AR number 2019-101. Second.
And so, yeah, we'll do a voice vote. So, student vote?
Yes.
Mr. Donnelly?
Yes.
Ms. Hildy?
Yes.
And yes for me also. Boy, that was easy. Okay, any, anything else before we move on to new business? Okay. I just wanted to bring up, and I know we saw East High School, but I can tell you, I've been looking at the suspension numbers, and I am very impressed. I looked at the Alaska Native students and some of our other ethnicities, and almost have gone down by half of what they used to be in middle school and high school, and I, you know, thank you. This is something, you know, I've been working for and towards for a long time, so I'm glad to see that we're addressing our students and out-of-school suspensions, and it's very evident in the numbers. We still have a couple of others we need to look at, and I know that you, you guys will continue on that effort. I worry a little bit about kids in transition, I don't know what's going on there, but I know that you guys are on top of it, and so I will look forward to seeing those numbers also. Is there any other new business by board members? Okay, that's at the end. Okay, do we have any final testimony? Yes, Eugene?
My name is Eugene Carl-Haberman, I represent myself, I follow the public process. When the public process done appropriately, decision made by the governing body is more likely in the public interest. Please note, I live in the Mattson Valley. Now, as people who know me, attending these meetings occasionally says, I know one said, former mayor says, boy, you don't miss much. And I guess I think this is an example of it, but let me go on first this scenario. Let me go on to the thing that surprised me. Your review of funding resolutions, which you just did, is non-action items, and that means non-action items, you don't take action, but you just did, because you're in a rush to get your opinion to the assembly available for the Anchorage Assembly meeting. And to remind you, also a concern with the Anchorage Assembly. They have on the 5 o'clock portion of the meeting, whole list of items there, and then at 6 o'clock, then they go with others like hearings and so forth. But they decide on all these different items at 5 o'clock, and there's no chance for public. My guess is that particular item that you're trying to get connected with the assembly, which you just done on a non-action item tonight, is going to be at the 5 o'clock portion, there's no chance for the public to say anything. That's example of not connecting with the public appropriately. Also, I could help but notice, you were passing around changes, and is this the stuff, is this different that I have here that I got before the meeting than what the changes are? And that's not the way to go. But I close with this thing, concern with a limited amount of time. You had a joint meeting with the Anchorage Assembly in City Hall, you meet periodically every few months, and I raise concern and issue that you're ignoring, and across the state they're ignoring. One of the principal revenues out there for you, the cities, is property taxes, and you're not dealing with reality. When I say with fairness, it's across the state, and the meetings I attend, that you're expecting the, you're going to approve budgets, it's going to be X amount, but with the situation that the value of properties is not real, it's only getting worse, and there's a tragic situation among businesses and people who own property, is what's going to happen. And the kicker is, you're creating a situation where there's a big cushion of difference in what the property values are in the budget you're approving, expecting it's all going to stay the same. And let me say this clearly, it's not. I was in the 80s, and I witnessed extraordinary exits of people leaving the state, leaving their homes and properties to the banks. And this is a situation that you're not dealing with, and you're doing as businesses usual. And with all due respect, I appreciate the time you provided me and other members of public to speak here with 19 seconds to spare. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we'll move on to school board administration comments. Ms., Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. I did not want to miss this as our last meeting, I did. At a former meeting of the board, our member, Mr. Holloman, who had many years of service to the Anchorage School District, stated that we provide just certificates as well as pins in regard to the number of years of service, and we wanted to honor Mr. Holloman with his pin of 20 years. And we hope you'll wear that, it'll go right next to the one that you have for the prior year, but he did work 20 years, and we want to present that to him. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to share that it is a delight, we are really the entire district and coming together and working towards student outcomes. I shared some of the data today, you shared some, and I believe, Madam President, you scheduled the next board meeting to actually share our data dashboard and how we revamped it, so we're looking forward to sharing that with you. So thank you for that, your comments, I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Ms. Mitchell, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one last plug for the June Nelson Memorial Scholarship. There are 15 scholarships issued by the Alaska Association of School Boards. They're for $1,000 each for graduating seniors, and the deadline for application is March 25. I should have mentioned it at the beginning of the meeting when there were still more people here. But if you know anybody who is a high school senior, there are 15 of these scholarships for Alaskan students throughout the state. You can go to the Alaska Association of School Boards website to get that information. And then I just wanted to also make a comment, we've gotten a few, not a lot of emails asking us to please not cut the budget and keep school funding. I just want to make sure that people understand that we wish we had that authority, but we don't. So that really is something that should be directed more to the state level, however you feel about that issue, so. But we appreciate people's input, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Donnelly?
I just want to say that the comparison of a democratic republic, either on the federal, the state, or the local level, adopting a national anthem and having a policy about its utilization is not a fair comparison to Communist China or North Korean authoritarian regimes. Just, I just want to put that on the record, that's just way out of bounds.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Holloman, do you have anything? Except how grateful you are to get that pin. Yeah, good, good. Okay. Well, do I have a motion to adjourn? Move to adjourn. Second? We are adjourned.